Of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Right. I know we've got some, uh, some, uh, adjustments to make to this agenda. Uh, I'd like to start with, uh, Patty made a recommendation, uh, in an email. I think it was just yesterday, right? To move council comments below public comments, which makes perfect sense. That'll give us a chance to address them if we see fit, and I think that's a great idea. So if y'all okay with that, we'll do that one.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, then let's see, uh, Sandra, I think you're wanting to pull E out of the consent agenda.
I do.
For discussion. So I'm gonna move it down to, uh, what will be E in our regular agenda. And I'm gonna put, uh, a discussion item for MPO and TAC in at D on our regular agenda.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that items C and D on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda. And, and I will request that I be recused from those two items because, um, the people requesting the annexation are, we are clients. My company works for them. I don't work for them directly, but
Your company does.
My company does, so I feel like I better just leave me out of that.
Okay, so we're gonna pull C and D, but we'll leave them, uh, right above our regular agenda. And we will, after we get to that part, we'll ask for you to be excused by motion. And then we'll take a vote, and then we'll go back to those after you leave for a second.
Okay.
All right. So I'm putting C and D right here. Okay. Anything else on this agenda that we need to doctor on before we approve it? If not, uh, entertain a motion to approve our modified agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with modifications.
Thank you, Jeff. Second, all right, thank you, Brian. Any more discussion on this agenda? There are none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Okay. All right. Manager updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, one brief minute and I'll catch up here with you. Um, just a quick update on the, uh, storm debris expansion site that's behind us here, as you may have seen coming in. That, uh, there's some equipment out there as they're working to, uh, finalize the closeout of that project. Right now, the last that we've heard is that the, uh, project is scheduled to be closed at the end of this month, September thirtieth. I have been in talks with, uh, uh, with the county as well, though, um, and there's a, uh, and a, a an extension of the contract on a month-to-month basis if they need it. However, it's up to six months. So that is, we've provided them with a little more leeway on that just to make sure that they could do it. It's under the still, still the same, uh, stipulations and requirements for closeout, uh, if they, you know, for, uh, uh, for expectations on that property, et cetera. So we are still working through there. I think, as I mentioned, over the coming days, they're working diligently to make sure that their punch list that we provided to them is executed appropriately. So, uh, there's going to be continued work on that, and, uh, I just want to thank the county for their hard work on making sure that that happens.
Does that include them getting it mowed?
Yeah, so on that punch list, we have provided for them, um, to, uh, re- return the property in which they have leased from us back to the condition that it was before, the light condition. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all you have? All right, so, uh, moving on to, uh, public comment. Uh, I don't know who signed up where, but I'll get y'all. I'm gonna start out with Jimmy Cowan.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, uh, does the nuisance ordinance, is it included any of that language in the regular agenda that's hard for me to understand? I don't feel that this is, like, annotated.
It can't help you. I think we all went to the same school.
Sound good.
We probably got somebody here can help us out for a while, and we'll try to get to that. I'll bring it back up.
Do you want me to cover all my public comments or save the one that's on the regular agenda?
If you could. That's what I'm gonna suggest of everybody. If it's pertaining to the one ninety-one, I would rather we hear those at that time. I'll give everybody a chance to speak on that at that point, so we can keep it all together.
Sounds great. Good evening, Council. Jimmy Cowan live on Presbyterian Church Road here in Mills River. I want to talk to you about a couple of things that concern me tonight. I jotted notes down so I keep within my allotted time. The nuisance ordinance. I knew we were in trouble when the building code changed to seriously restrict what type of commercial construction could be built along the two eighty corridor. We all know that most of the existing buildings don't meet the code, and new businesses are discouraged from building unless they're the mega stores with mega bucks and mega backing. Now, commercial businesses are getting treated like any residents when it comes to nuisances. I thought the businesses could have any materials and parts around the business they needed that pertain to the business being conducted. I learned that the town now inter- interprets items like tires at a tire shop, parts vehicles at a repair shop, or scrap metal at a welding shop as nuisances and a hazard to the community. Uh, I think this is wrong. I think businesses have to function, and not every business is as clean as a brand-new truck. Somebody has to work on that stuff. If somebody's used, um, is used as a, uh, if something's used as a part of a business, why are we meddling and restricting it? One of these days, we're gonna be complaining about the church bells around here if we keep this up. Uh, and then the floodplain ordinance. Uh, as you consider a floodplain ordinance, I want to state my perspective on a couple of things. Agriculture in the river are better today in town than a lot of other areas of western North Carolina due to our unique position where farmers that could afford to do so could get busy repairing and stopping further damage after Helene without waiting on studies and permits. Agriculture, according to one of our first town ordinances, was not to be regulated any stricter than state and federal requirements. This floodplain ordinance as proposed has a lot of gray area in it. Contradictions and paragraphs an attorney has to interpret or argue in court. I ask you, is agriculture exempt from the ordinance? Or are there some exemptions for agriculture in the ordinance as proposed? Why do you wish to harm the industry that has built this community and continues to provide much of the beauty, um, people come here for? I go back to my question, is ag exempt or not? By show of hands, raise your hand if you agree with what I'm saying tonight. Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, Jason Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Town Staff. Uh, Jason Davis representing my family in North River Farms and Davis Ranch near Mills River. I just want to say, first of all, thank you for your service. I know it's not an easy job. I know that you all put a lot of effort and time and I sleepless nuts. Now, Mills River is a great community. It's a growing community, and I know there's a lot of growing pains and a lot of things that take up your time, things that you have to deal with. I'm gonna be very, very simple. Um, as I walked in tonight, I didn't know exactly what I was gonna say, but I sat down there and I just started looking at the pictures that represent council over the years since Mills River, uh, first incorporated. Got a lot of respect for each and every one of those people. I'm privileged and blessed to know every one of them, had a friendship with everyone, have friendship with each one of you. Love and care about you, appreciate what you do. But I think, uh, might not agree with every decision that they've made through the years, but I know one thing, they've always seemed, in my opinion, to have agriculture as a priority and appreciate agriculture and see the importance of it in, uh, this community. And I would just like, uh, for each of you in your quiet time, as you're pondering the many issues that you have before you, to please really think about agriculture and, and the word agriculture exemption and what that means. Somebody told me just the other day, said our farmers are getting old. Well, I guess we are getting older. You know, but I'm gonna say something. I've got three boys, nineteen, fourteen, and eleven that, uh, wanted to be here tonight, and they'll be here when the time's appropriate. But, uh, they sure would love the opportunity to farm in Mills River. And there's a lot of other young people. I was just talking to a councilman a few minutes ago, showing me the first piece of farm equipment that his son broke. I said, well, welcome to the club, because, uh, but anyway, on a serious note, please really look at that and please, the decisions that you make, I know we're all charged, uh, with doing what's best for Mills River. And in those, in those, in your quiet time and your thinking, please think about that, uh, as, as Mr. Cowan referred back to it. One of those first ordinances that the town, first council up there talked a lot about was taking care of agriculture. And I'm gonna close by saying this. There's, Mills River is a wonderful community, a lot of wonderful, great groups in this community. There's three groups in this community that you can always count on in the good times and the bad times. That's our community churches. That's our community fire department, and that's our community, uh, farmers. You know, and I'll refer back to just this latest natural disaster. We had tractors out there pushing trees. We pushed snow. We, we, we helped with wherever's needed. But, uh, my oldest son, a high boy tractor carrying patients for Henderson County EMS in an emergency situation through the floodwater. But, uh, God bless you all. God bless Mills River and our, our nation. And agriculture is important to us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see who I got. Uh, James Keys.
Mayor, don't stop. James Kaze, two four five Forgecrest, uh, right up here on top of the mountain. Jumping a gun a little bit as this one, and we were going over the agenda and saw that Big Hills is doing an annexing on South Forgecrest Drive. And South Forgecrest Drive is in a gated community up there. Uh, so I'm gonna wade the rest of my time to my wife, who's done all the research on this. Um, and this is again, them doing their initial filing of it, so we're getting ahead of this one.
Okay.
Talk after, since you've changed the agenda, because he works for Big Hill?
No, he doesn't work.
I do not work for Big Hill.
His company is doing, uh, some subcontract.
My company does.
Yeah, but come on up, come on up.
Okay, hi, I'm Deborah Kaze, and I live on two four five Forgecrest Drive. And I was coming here tonight for Todd to say, first of all, that it's ridiculous of how they're harassing his business. And I agree with the previous guy one hundred percent of these businesses that have been around for twenty years. If they've got tires in the way or junk over here, I bought up on a mountain. I can see a whole bunch of crud. If I come up here and start complaining to Mills River about all the junk I see, I bought up on a mountain. I should be able to say, hey, that's their business and leave it alone. That's how we should be on that. But so that got me interested coming in this meeting, and I saw on C acceptance of certificate of sufficiency for annexation request for Big Hill Construction and it's case, annexation of Forgecrest property. And I started reading into that, and I said, wait a second, what are they doing here? We live off of Bulston Highway. Hunter's Ridge Drive goes to Hunter's View, goes to Forgecrest. Big Hills Construction has been surveying in that corner, which is a private road. They bought all that Fulham land that's off of Bulston Highway. They are not landlocked. They can come in from Bulston Highway. Am I wrong to consider that because we have a private road, they should not be able to come through our subdivision where we have twenty-eight homes? And the subdivision below us has over fifty properties and homes? They shouldn't, if I'm reading this right, I don't know, I'd have to ask the planner, what gives them the right to come through our neighborhood? Um, when the Fulhams developed that, they assured us there'd be no clear cutting, and they were gonna do a phase three and a phase four with two to four acres. And our house has, our neighborhood has twenty-eight homes. Big Hills Construction plans on building two hundred and thirty-seven homes. Our roads are over twenty years old. They're private roads. They're not made for all of that construction work to come through our little neighborhood and the neighborhood. We've already got potholes, huge potholes, big sizes because they're private roads. Um, but I don't know if you guys approve that. I was told by the, um, young lady over here that October twenty-third is the big meeting, and I will be guaranteed I'll get everybody to come to that. So thank you for listening to me on that.
Thank you. Uh, Peter Henry?
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, my name is Pete Henry. I'm an attorney over in Bunca County. I'm here representing Naples Transportation. You've heard already, um, that there has been some complaints, uh, nuisance complaints concerning Naples Transportation. Uh, Naples Transportation, as you probably all know, is a company that's been here. It's been in existence for more than thirty years in that same location doing it seems that starting now, uh, and introducing nuisance violations for something that has been an ongoing business that predates the town is a, is an issue that the town really needs to consider whether or not this is operation they want to continue. Secondly, and probably more importantly, is it is commenting on the, uh, the proposed UDO. It appears, um, and, and I will say that I spent a, a fair bit of time looking for documents through that UDO. And it's not a, despite the fact that the website will tell you documents are here, they're available, they're not readily available. But the commercial and industrial, uh, zoning needs to be considered along the, um, along Bulston Highway. It needs to take into account the longevity of these businesses. Again, Naples Transportation has been here since before the town was a town. The town needs to be extremely careful to make sure that they are not regulating businesses and industries in the same way they're trying to, uh, regulate residences. Planned, uh, growth is a laudable goal. But it also has to take into account the fact that there are existing businesses and, and take into account how those businesses have operated over time. And make sure that you are not changing the very nature of those businesses. I would ask you to make sure that you're considering that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Jim, Mr. Paul. One night, wait on one nine one. Okay, I've got a Mike Corn. One ninety-one. Okay, Jimmy was down twice, but I'm sure that's the one. Okay. All right, that's got our public comment. Anyone else that's come in that hadn't signed up for public comment, won't get up and say anything. Free and free to do so. Well, you'll have to come up to step to the podium. We can, we gotta record it.
I'm Jerry Brady. Nice to see all you guys again. I hate to come here, like my blood pressure goes up soon as I turn in the driveway. But, uh, I think the thing that we could do to stop some of this stuff is to, um, I mean, it's not gonna stop at all, but if you've got enough of a problem to turn some whatever he's got there, why can't you put your name behind it? You know, I think it should be not an anonymous situation all the time. People should put their name behind.
Got you.
Uh, you know what I'm saying? No anonymous complaints. It should be, you should put your name.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Larry Johnson, twenty-one sixty-five Jefferson Road. Uh, as many of you all know, the townhomes that were just recently built, still being built, are right on top of us. Two years ago, uh, the town hit us with a nuisance violation. And while I was in agreement of that, it was it was very extreme because my dad had been at that property since nineteen ninety-six. Or he's actually operated doing miscellaneous things since nineteen ninety-six. That's my, my father passed two years ago, uh, about three weeks after. So all all the stuff that I'm having to clean up and get rid of, of years of accumulation from my father. What biggest reasons was the townhome. And from what I gather, the developer, the one that committed, that filed the complaint. Then I had to fight them on property law. So I was just hearing about this actually today. Spent some free time at work trying to research everything. And honestly, some of the information is, is this not there? Like, I'm trying to read about rezoning. In a rezoning for community center? What is a community center rezoning? What is that different from residential? So I might be a little too early on that, and I'm kinda late to the game as far as understanding this. But I felt the need to come up here and talk about the nuisance. Because while it may be safety concerned, what somebody does on their property is no concern of others. You know, I made up like an electric car sit in the parking lot, or someone's driving. Like, that's, that's absolutely terrible. I hate it. I don't wanna look at it. I mean, is it not the same thing? Sorry, I did not plan on speaking tonight, so just kind of but I understand that the nuisance code was followed by Henderson County. I believe that's how it was adopted. I believe the town has the authority to adjust that. And from the help of Mr. Webb, I've been gracious of his help. But I feel for the people that this is gonna hit, and even harder, especially businesses. Because businesses should be the last thing that we go after. But I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, can I get your phone number here?
Sure.
Anyone else while he's writing his phone number down? Going once, going twice, three times?
I've talked to him before. I came by your place when they were doing that.
Hey, that's all. That's all on my list. We're gonna move on to, uh, council comments. Anyone want to get us started on council comments?
Um, I would like to say congratulations for Ms. Sarah Schwartz from Mills River Elementary School. She was awarded the Mills River Beginning Teacher of the Year Award, which is a wonderful recognition for her and for the school and for the community. And also congratulations for Mike Corn being inducted into the Livestock Hall of Fame for Mills River. I believe he's the only dairy farmer we have left here in Mills River. And he has worked on educating children for many years. And he does it through the school and different organizations, and, um, my children have been over there and learned from him too. So thank you for all you've done, Mike, and we appreciate you.
You got it. Uh, I'll just, uh, mention that this Saturday, there's a Blue Ridge Honor Flight honoring I'll just mention that this Saturday, there's a Blue Ridge Honor Flight honoring our veterans that's going to Washington. And there's, uh, it's open if anyone wants to come welcome them home. Especially our Vietnam veterans did not get welcomed home. So there's a good opportunity. I believe they'll be back around nine. The website, Blue Ridge Honor Flight, has the schedule on their website. And I apologize for not having that time. Yes, and there will be parking. You park over at the fairground, there's a shuttle bus, they'll take you right up to the hangar. And there'll be bands and entertainment and all kinds of stuff until, till they get there, and it's pretty cool. I had the privilege of going on an honor flight, and it's life-changing.
Sure. That all you got?
That's all I got.
James, you got anything?
Mr. Kim? Uh, I just was, so last week Jeff and I attended the procedures training. So I don't want to thank staff or corporate guys. And then yesterday I attended the rescue squad luncheon. And I just want to thank them for their service to our community that they, uh, on a daily basis, various rescue activities. And also want to thank Oliver Public. Uh, it's coming up on a one-year anniversary for me. So you know, it's not necessarily what they do, the big bands, it's what they do every day that doesn't get seen or noticed. So thank you.
All right, so you know me, I'm gonna tell it like this. All right, folks, I've been in here with Matt and Mr. Malcheck on these nuisance orders. When we straight up with you, I didn't agree with them. Not all of them. Some of them I did, some of them I didn't. Uh, but in saying that, I would love to see this get kicked back to the planning board the very next meeting we they have. Straight up. I want it worked on. I want it fixed. I was probably want it voted in. I've only missed six years. The first two and the four that my wife had a stroke and didn't know what I was gonna have left when she come out of the hospital. But I'm not in agreeance with this, you know? That's not gonna happen on my watch. It ain't gonna do it. No, that man right back there, I feel so sorry for him. I can't, you know, all them cars and stuff. I, I grew up just like, I grew up, yeah, I grew up just like he did. You go to my daddy's house, same exact thing. Anybody knows me, same exact thing there. I'll have the same problem one of these days. Same problem. And that's not gonna happen on this watch. I'll be out of here and gone in just a few months. So you better find somebody to replace me. And I'm telling you that straight up. I'm either moving on to the county or I'm gonna go up there and watch TV. But I'm telling you right now, I'll be in here and you think they spoke up. Yeah, I'll, I'll get up there and I'll light the damn world up if I don't agree with it. And, and I sent him to talk to y'all. And he did. And I'm gonna tell you straight up. He calls me that evening and he had no report from me. Now you talking about pissed off, I was pissed off, straight up, calling a spade a spade. If I send you to do something, at least have some kind of response when you call me back. I went and talked to you, talked to both of you. And I come spend an hour and forty minutes with him discussing what I had to talk about. So you take care. I'm for the farmers, I'm for the fire department, I'm for the sheriff's department. If you worry where I'm at, I'm for rural, I'm for people working, business people. Anybody got doubt where I'm at, you just call and ask me. Two, four, three, fifty, six, thirty. That'll get me, I'll answer. I know some of you's had a time getting a hold of some of these guys, and that, well, that's gonna come to a stop too. Okay, I'm just calling it like it is. You know, Mills River's not gonna change overnight and me sitting here. It ain't gonna do it. These ordinances have been in place since God knows when. A few of them got adjusted supposedly in two thousand eighteen. I wouldn't hear then, but I don't think nothing drastic happened right then. And if I voted that stuff in and followed suit with Fletcher, my Hendersonville, Weaverville, wherever they pulled this stuff from, I apologize to you right now. Because I, I'll be honest with you, I can't read good. But I'll read it fifteen times and still not understand. But if it got pushed through, it got pushed through. But some of these other people up here was in on it with me. And I, and I got utmost respect for them. So if it got through on my watch, it got through on their watch too. But you will, you will see this get kicked back to the planning board, I hope. And pray that it gets looked at sooner than later. Okay? Now that's all I got for now, but I might open it back up in a few minutes.
Can I say something, Shannon?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on what we're dealing with, with the ordinances right now, um, I don't know if there's been any fines led to that yet. But the town just passed a ordinance to where they're doing the clearinghouse project to where if there's fines levied against property and they're not paid, then the municipalities can garnish your state, um, tax return checks to cover those fines. If there's any fines that are put out there right now, I would like to put a hold on that if we can, till we get this resolved before something goes on and gets to a point to where it's getting worse.
Well, I would, I would like that to be a discussion item. So we can get it and make sure everything is only up and up with that, everything is true and faithful and, and in all that conversation. And yeah, we'll, we'll look at it and discuss it.
Okay, so y'all got that?
That's the first I've heard of the clearinghouse.
No, we, we passed that.
We passed it.
We did.
Okay.
That was a new thing that come up. They found it, I think, through the league of municipalities. Wasn't it down there where y'all got that?
Yeah, all right, all right. That all you got, Sandra? Okay, anybody else going once, going for?
Is there, was, was this the Naples Transportation? Was, I understand it may be anonymous, but was it reported? Or I hope we're not, like I said the other day, I hope we're not out looking for problems.
So Mayor and Council, the, um, uh, we're not prepared to talk about specific individual items. However, what we can say is that for nuisance ordinances, nuisance ordinances are complaint-driven. So for items that fall within our nuisance ordinances, we are not going out and, uh, looking at properties without there being a complaint that drives that action.
Okay. I'll say one other thing. These Mills River people, you ain't gotta come down here and file a complaint. If they're natives up here, I guarantee you, you walk down there, knock on their door, walk in their place of business, tell them what your problem is. They'll, they'll, they'll come more after figuring it out then than they will this other way. You're gonna catch it, you're gonna catch a lot more flies with sugar than you are salt. So be good neighbors, be good neighbors. That's all I'm asking. I'm not gonna let fifteen or twenty, what they call anymore, this social media Karens or whatever, run this town. We're gonna, we're gonna do it the old-fashioned way as long as I'm here, and we're just gonna be people, country, rural people that likes farming in our neighborhood. And I hope that's not a problem. If it is, you're living in the wrong community. All right, let's move on if we can. We got a long night ahead of us as it is. All right, uh, I'm gonna call for the consent agenda, which we have pulled C and D off of the side. And E, yeah, and E. We've moved E. All right, so, uh,
I'll make a motion to refuse, uh, council.
We gotta do the first ones. We gotta do the, the first one. So I need a motion to approve on our consent of the A, B, F, and G.
So moved.
So moved Sanders, so moved second, Jeff second. Any more discussion on those four? There none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Here none. Okay.
Okay, for Adam C and D, what he said, your record is straight. Work for a transportation interior company. Have many clients. Big deals construction, American, what are clients? I did not personally, I'm not personally involved in anything. Did not have a chance to suddenly move from here.
I make a motion to refuse. Mentioned on the consent.
All right, thank you, Brian. Second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Sandra. Uh, any discussion on what we just said? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll ask you to step out and we'll come get you. All right, looking for a motion on C and D of our consent agenda.
So I make a motion to approve C and D on.
Okay, Brian, made a motion. Second? Thank you, James. Uh, any discussion on what we're doing with them two? You good, Sandra? Good. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Here none. Okay, consent agenda's done.
We gotta pull E down.
We done did.
Okay.
We did it early when we approved.
Okay, I was making sure we get straight.
Okay, we're moving on to our regular agenda, uh, our U D O presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Howdy.
Council members. I am Chad Meadows with Code Bright Planters, and it's my pleasure to be back before you guys to tell you, give you a status update on where we are with this project. So I know you have a full agenda. It'll take, I don't know, fifteen minutes. Happy to answer some questions. Uh, we have some questions for you. Um, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and jump in. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. I don't, oh, there it is. Thank you. There it goes. Okay. I'll talk quickly about the project background. We'll overview the annotated outline, tell you what that part of this process is. A couple of questions for you guys, uh, pretty simple questions, and then we'll go to next steps. Uh, this is our third trip to Mills River. Uh, this visit, we had a zoning map review with your staff, uh, yesterday. We had steering committee meeting number four last night. Today, we conducted public forum two, uh, in this room from twelve to five-thirty. Uh, we have this presentation with you guys this evening. Uh, we'll have office hours in here tomorrow from nine to twelve. Anyone and everyone who has questions about this U D O, what's on the website, any questions at all about anything? Please come join us here from nine to twelve tomorrow in this room. Karen and I will be happy to try to answer your questions. If we cannot answer your questions, then we will find the answer and get back to you. Um, we will post the draft annotated outline and the draft zoning map to the project website, www dot imagine millsriver dot com on Friday of this week. Okay? And we look forward to more discussion about the materials as we move forward. Now, these are our seven project goals. You see first and foremost to protect community character, rural community character. Um, implementing your town policy, creating a document that works, protecting the environment, increasing housing options, promoting development quality. The development that you do get needs to be high quality, and then obviously bringing your code into the modern world. Code diagnosis was the last document that we put before you guys. It included a series of seven recommendations that talked about how exactly we would make the code more user-friendly, how we would protect character, how we'd expand housing options, promote development quality, et cetera. That information is on the website, uh, and feel free to review that at your convenience. The annotated outline is the next step in the process. It's the refinement of the concepts discussed in the code diagnosis. It sets out the proposed document format, the chapter structure, the main sections, the detail that's in there. It talks about the procedures, the districts, the uses, and it explores the potential development standards. So it is the dress rehearsal for the U D O. It is not the U D O itself, but rather an introduction to it. This is a copy of the page layout. You see a new numbering system, use of colors and bolding to in, and indentation to organize text. We have navigational aids. We use flow charts, we use diagrams, and most importantly, we use plain English. Instead of jargon, instead of acronyms, the intention is to make this understandable, predictable, so that you can look at it and I can look at it, and we can agree on what it says. This is the chapter structure. There are nine chapters to the document. You'll note they're in alphabetical order. Each section in each chapter is in alphabetical order, so you can find your way through the document easily. That's the intention, make this document easy to use. I'm gonna spend just a couple of minutes talking about some of the key pieces, and then we'll move on. Uh, chapter one is the administration chapter, the legal boilerplate. Sets out the rules for consistency with your adopted policy guidance, the standards for conflict, purpose and intent of the regulations, and how we handle existing development, non-conforming development. Development that exists today gets to exist tomorrow. Nobody's coming to close any businesses down or cause any problems for anything that was lawfully established. That stuff can stay. It is grandfather. Chapter two are the applications. It includes all of the application materials, the review authorities, who decides what and the processes that they use. We're very clear about who's applicable, who's exempted, what the review criteria are, the steps in the process, how you amend, if it expires, the effect, et cetera, and that's set down procedure by procedure. There's about twenty-one procedures that are set down in this document. Chapter three are the zoning districts, the zoning maps, the geographical distribution of uses across the town. There are approximately twelve, thirteen zoning districts in your draft zoning map. Copies of the map will be available on the project website in tomorrow, on Friday, and we'll be in this room tomorrow with copies of the map if you'd like to find out more information about it. Steering committee members have had a copy of the draft map for a couple of days. Now, um, what we seek to do, uh, is not create non-conformities, continue to sort of protect agriculture and the rural character that you've established here, and also address some of the problems that have been an issue for Mills River, specifically the mixed-use zoning district, which is problematic. Uh, now that the water supply watershed rules have changed, and there are effectively few limitations on density and a few limitations on impervious surface because of the changes to the water supply watershed. That has left this town unprotected in terms of its mixed-use zoning. So we need to address that going forward. This chapter is, uh, one of the steps in making that, uh, making that correction. We've got a series of incentives and alternatives that we want to propose for y'all's consideration. This is opportunities for people to voluntarily incorporate things into their development and get some sort of benefit out of it. I don't know what that benefit's gonna be. We haven't finished that part yet, but we want to talk to you guys about it. This is a copy of the zoning map. It's preliminary. We expect it to change, not once, not twice, probably three times. The intention is to talk with you guys about what works, what doesn't, and get this to a workable piece of paper for you guys going forward. Okay? Chapter four is the land uses. Principal, prohibited, secondary, temporary, unlisted. This sets down where the zoning districts, where uses are allowed, what's the process that will follow. We have created four conditional zonings that allow more opportunity for flexibility, more opportunity for negotiation. Okay? All within the constructs of protecting rural character, promoting development quality, protecting the environment. Chapter five, non-conformities. I said before, I'll say it again. If you exist and you're lawfully established, this document will not impact you. You can stay, you can continue, you can maintain. And in fact, one of the things that you might see is that if you are currently non-conforming, we might wipe that away and just allow you to be there lawfully, legitimately, that you can replace it even if it burns down. Okay, so we are trying to make things better, more common sense, not worse. These are the standards. There are quite a lot of them. Um, you'll note that this is the parking and the landscaping and the open space and the resource protection, stormwater. All of the regulations that are inside the development code will be set down in this chapter six. We will work with these, with your steering committee, with your planning board, with the residents, hopefully, uh, and with the elected officials as we move through this process. Uh, this is the second sort of step. The first was the code diagnosis, the second is the annotated outline. From here, we move into the drafting part. We'll have two bites of this apple. We're gonna put the, the document together, work with the steering committee, work with the community, we're gonna revise, and we're gonna come back and say, here it is. This is what you guys told us. Here's the revised version. Okay? I have three questions for you guys. Think I know the answer to number one, but I'll go ahead and ask it anyway. Should we be regulating farms and agriculture or just simply exempt them?
In the town of Mills River?
In the town of Mills River.
They've been exempt since the town incorporated.
Understood. Is there support for applying design controls from the corridor overlay to the non-residential development townwide? Right now, you've got a set of overlay standards that applies material controls and some other design provisions to non-residential development on lots that abut your highways. We are suggesting making some changes to those regulations. Maybe those rules are applied townwide, maybe not. Maybe they're only applied proximate to highways, maybe they're applied everywhere, or maybe they're applied based on building sites. Do you guys have any feeling about these kinds of non-residential design standards?
Can you, uh, give me examples in the chat?
So right now, your current standards talk about the use of, of exterior materials, that they need to be quote "natural" or, or similar to natural. And we apply them based on whether or not the, the side of the building is visible from the street or not. That's a little vague. Uh, it's a little confusing. Um, we are suggesting the possibility Um, we are suggesting the possibility of treating different building sides differently based on whether or not it faces a road or not. You may decide, utilization of phrasing like appears similar to a natural material probably needs some greater clarification. Um, frankly, building material standards should probably be structured in a way that say, these are the prohibited materials and stop there. It's not necessary for you to give people a, uh, you know, you have to use this or you have to use that. Rather, we say, don't use IFIS, don't use plywood. You can't use smooth face concrete block on so, on building walls that face streets. Trying to simplify the regulations, but again, this is, this is a, a matter for y'all's consideration. You heard me say development quality was something that we wanted to pursue, that if development was gonna come to Mills River, we wanted it to be high-quality development. So that's something that we're trying to balance.
What decides what's the front of the building?
Which side of the building faces the street from which the building is addressed?
That's the way I've always heard it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I remember that. But I was just wondering what determines the front of the building?
That's typical.
That will get clarified.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you guys have an opportunity to review this stuff and we'll talk about it, whether or not it makes sense. We just wanted to ask this question, you guys.
Yeah, it gives me a little heartburn to even have some of these standards in there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've had, uh, metal structure buildings that they want to add it on. They had to take the new section and frizz it up a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it just don't look right.
Right.
Um. It didn't bother me the other way.
Okay.
So, but I'm.
They've got.
Rural and country again.
They've got landscape and restrictions that need to be done. And that helps, you know, dress a place up and camouflage what it is. But if you're still requiring so much percentage of natural materials, as in rock, wood, and glass, and there's so much percentage for a door, you know, and all that stuff right there. It becomes an expense.
I would like to see the, the list that the, we rule out using this.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see what that looks like on paper.
Okay, alright, very good, very good.
But no, this is brought up when I was on planning board and we had a ton of meetings about it. And in the community, there was overwhelmingly support for that, for design standards.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that some people are against it and I get that side of it, but the majority of the community was for it, too.
It is a question of balance. Uh, I, I understand, you know, that protecting rural character is very, very important, that there's a lot of growth pressure in this community right now. And, you know, some of the conversations we've had recently are if we're going to have new development in Mills River, it should be of high quality, that that should be the expectation. Uh, and I think that, you know, the opportunity is for you guys to see what we draft, which is coming soon. Uh, and then we talk about it, whether or not we've gone too far or we haven't gone far enough. And, you know, I, I don't envy you guys in that you will have to adjudicate, you'll have to balance those viewpoints. I, I think there are some points in the, some points of view in the community about the need for higher-quality non-residential design. I think everybody can agree, if you're gonna have multifamily here in Mills River, it should be high-quality design. Those buildings should be beautiful. Finally, um, should we consider incentives? Um, if somebody proposes to, uh, do a really, really beautiful building or provide some extra open space or give us green stormwater infrastructure or some other aspect that we can't require under the law, but they choose to voluntarily provide it, should they be rewarded for that in some fashion? Again, provision of these kinds of features would be voluntary, not mandatory. As a, as a developer, someone might ask the town, I would like to do this or do that. And in favor or in trade for that, I will give you extra open space or I'll make a fee and lieu contribution for utilization for parkland or some other kind of aspect like that. And it is not uncommon for local governments to offer density bonuses or allow larger signage or allow taller buildings, and even in some cases waive some portion of standards for development that is providing these things that we say we want or we like. So that's a question, this question about incentives and whether or not there are rewards for people who voluntarily choose to make, to provide that.
And for me, I don't, I'm not interested in changing design standards. The only thing that I would consider far as grant wise, if a developer comes in there and they're willing to apply grants to leasing or selling for housing that is affordable.
Mm-hmm. That's a very common, yes.
Then I'm okay with that. And when I'm affordable, I'm not meaning like, you know, an eight hundred thousand dollar house for a teacher.
Right.
That's not affordable.
Right.
So for people who are in public safety in this area, we have to have those. We have to have nurses, we have to have teachers, we have to have firemen, we have to have policemen. Unfortunately, they don't get paid a lot. So if developers are willing to make or place housing at a price that's reasonable for them and they'll guarantee that for the life of the project, then I'm okay to possibly consider this.
That is a very common incentive for affordable housing.
I'm a little gun shy on that one. And I mean, I, it, it's a great thought and I appreciate it. You know, if it would really come true, that would be wonderful. But I've seen people come in here and want high-density developments and say, oh yes, we're gonna make these affordable for people. Well, the next thing you know, they come back and say, well, with the price of land, with the price of building supplies, it's gonna be at least nineteen hundred dollars a month for a one-room apartment. I mean, and their reply to that was, well, there's nothing we can do.
Hmm.
And we kinda, you know, we're just stuck with that.
Sure.
Um, the people that come in here to build developments like this that would offer incentives, they're developers.
Mm-hmm.
They're here to make a money and get out. They're not gonna be here and stay. You know, you can't be guaranteed twenty years down the road that it's still gonna be a nice development. So I'm a little leery of those myself, but that's just me.
Understood, and, and those are, are real issues and real points. It's, it is commonplace for communities that use these kinds of things, at least for affordable housing, to, to require the applicant to record deed restrictions that set the price of rental or sale based on the average median income for this area. Um, and that if you don't maintain that, not only are you in violation of your development approval, you're in violation of your covenants and your deed restrictions. Uh, and I realize that's a detail. I get the point that you're sort of making, which is, how do we know? Where's the proof that they're gonna, you know, be of their word? And it's a really, really good point. It's a good question and it's something that we should consider. And again, we get back to this issue of balance. Do you guys, you know, where, where does that fall on the balance? The need for, you know, housing that is affordable for your service personnel versus the concern over the unscrupulous developer who, you know, just gives you a pig in the poker or tells you one thing and does something else. We can write provisions that allow them, that, that protect you, but at the end of the day, if that developer or if that company, you know, tries to, to play games with you or, or, or tell you a story, you know, you do have to go after them and pursue that, and that does take resources. It does take staff time and it's trouble. Right?
I've been reading a lot about bonds here lately.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think ninety-nine-year bonds are a good way to go.
Mm-hmm, deed restrictions for affordable housing typically have ninety-nine-year timeframes associated with them. Um, and we require them to be recorded so that they're there, because the people who approve that are gonna be gone in ninety-nine years. Uh, so I, you know, I mean, again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to sweat you one way or another. This is an option for you guys. It's not an option that you need to rely on. Uh, but it is one that we're seeing more commonly for affordable housing, for extra environmental protection, extra open space, not the minimum standard. They're gonna do that, because if they want to get an approval, they'll have to. But if you give more or if you do development that in ways that, you know, the town is, is looking for, then maybe there's an incentive to do that, and maybe there isn't. Uh, I think that's a, that's a decision point that, you know, is a policy matter. We're gonna look to you guys for that, uh, rather than, uh, you know, just going off and writing that on our own.
I'd like to say this, I'm in the building business. There's no such thing as cheap housing right now.
Right.
And this land in Mills River is really expensive.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not, either one of those bother me, it's the fact that fifty years from now, this type of housing is gonna be, has a chance. So let me say this, has a chance to fall in shambles.
Mm-hmm.
It's affordable to start with. It's gonna be hard for the people to keep it up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're saying. And that's where we're gonna end up with a lot of crime. We're gonna end up with a lot of drugs. We're gonna end up with a lot of stuff that those folks back here that we hire deal with.
Mm-hmm.
Me personally, I'd less like to keep it out of Mills River to start with. So if we let it come in here, then you're gonna have it and have to deal with it, not me. Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years down the road. You see it in Bunkin' Camp.
Sure.
Some of those places we went over and we could go through and, and my dad take me to work. You can't even drive your grown-up son through there.
Right.
And we'd be kids playing in those people's yards.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it, that's just, I just don't think that's the way for Mills River at this point in time. That's me.
And, and that's pretty much the density greater than four units per acre, which pretty much is an apartment complex.
Creates, yeah, creates that hot living.
So that's probably not something that we want to list as an incentive, that you can have more than four.
Yep.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Um, next steps. So we had some change in state law that caught us in this project, and I know that you guys are aware of that. That, uh, Senate Bill three eighty-two, the downzoning bill. You're the only local government in North Carolina that got exemption from that legislation so that we could finish this project. And that's great news for you. Uh, it did slow us down and we're gonna have to make up that, the, that time in tasks four and five. Okay, which is the drafting part. This document needs to be adopted by July first of twenty twenty-six. So we have about eight months to get this document done. That's drafted, reviewed, adopted. Okay? So we are on fast track here. Your steering committee has committed to, to working with us to get this document done on time. Um, Karen and myself are, have committed to getting it done on time. And obviously, your staff's always, uh, very supportive of this kind of material. So where we are in the process right now, we're finishing task three, the annotated outline. We're moving to task four, the initial draft. We anticipate having an initial draft finished in January of twenty-six. Uh, we will review that, discuss it, uh, revise it and come back before you, probably in April. Um, at that point, we'll get your second round of comments and then we hope to start the adoption process in May. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Okay. Um, I know that we're the subject behind. Uh, but we can't get this like the middle of June. You know, we, we need time to. This is a big.
Absolutely.
Big deal. So the, the sooner the better. Um. Even if it's pieces apart and then, you know, that we can.
Agree to.
Yeah, all over, cuz, um, I heard that this is maybe like five hundred pages long.
That's right.
So if you think you're gonna get us to agree on five hundred pages.
You, 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 no. Understood.
We eventually will, but not first.
Right, understood, understood. Well, it, it's our job to make sure that we, uh, meet finish line on time.
Alright, no other questions?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your presentation. Alright, moving on along, uh, N C one ninety-one widening project.
Mr. Mayor, if it's, uh, if it pleases you in the court, uh, geez, you and you and you in council, pleases you in council. I apologize, I haven't spoken in a little bit. Um, we do have those, the, uh, those that have spoken, uh, for, uh, to speak on behalf of this item. Uh, just depending on whether or not you want them to speak before the presentation or after the presentation.
I'd, I'd just send them to speak after, that way they'll get to hear all the spiel in case they got any, any, brings up any questions.
Understood.
Have other one that we got in mind now.
Understood, just making sure.
Okay.
Well, we have our, uh, our presenters coming up here for the N C one ninety-one widening project. If I may, I'm just gonna ask you all to come up. Tristan, I know you're here, Troy, you're here, I believe, uh, other people from N C D O T, Bert, if it's all right, to also come up as well. Uh, I just want to mention that when it comes to the one ninety-one widening project improvements, uh, again, we've had, there have been conversations, um, I think it goes back to about May or so around this item. And at that time, for the public safety, uh, experts that were in the room, the question was, uh, can you please come back with more information to be able to provide it to this body? Um, since then, I also do want to report out, unfolding the document here, the Ag Advisory Board, uh, had a discussion about this at last Friday's meeting. At that meeting, they, uh, unanimously, unanimously passed a, uh, recommendation that the town council, uh, not revisit the N C one ninety-one widening plan and retain the five-lane expansion plan. As I mentioned, that was passed unanimously at that time. So with that being said, uh, Tristan, I believe, are you kicking us off, uh, this evening?
Um, I can.
Absolutely, right? Your, your presentation appears to be in front of us.
Okay. Um, hey, everyone, I'm Tristan Winkler. I'm the director of the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, of which Mills River is a member, so, uh, we serve you. Um, but, uh, we did want to talk today about the R twenty-five eighty-eight B project, uh, the planned widening of N C one ninety-one. Uh, so, next slide. Um, so just a little bit of background, uh, I think a lot of people are familiar with it. Um, that project is the planned widening, uh, from two eighty down to Mountain Road. Uh, it was actually programmed, uh, we worked with the town of Mills River in Henderson County, uh, to help get that project funded, uh, back in twenty fourteen. Uh, it's been on the books for a minute. Um, and, uh, it was initially programmed as a four-lane divided road. Uh, it was changed to a five-lane at the request of the town in twenty eighteen. Uh, and most recently, the construction start date for this project was delayed uh, as part of the twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-five State Transportation Improvement Program, also known as the STI. Next slide. Um, so I, I think last time we were here, there was the question of why, why are we talking about this again? Um, and so just to give a little more background, uh, at the M P O, um, we're required to pass safety, safety targets for the region, uh, every year. Uh, council member Moore, uh, sat through this past year. Mayor Gantz has sat through a number, uh, of these discussions. Um, and one thing that has come up repeatedly, uh, especially over the last few years, um, is that we are not achieving our safety targets in our region. Um, we aim for crashes to be reduced, for fatalities on our roads to be reduced. Uh, we are not achieving those targets. Um, and you can see the kind of, uh, on the next column over, are we doing better than the baseline? No. Um, in general, our safety trends, um, are, are not moving, uh, in the direction that, you know, I, I think we all would generally like them to move towards, uh, I E. towards fewer crashes, fewer fatalities, towards safer roads. Uh, next slide. Um, and I'll point out, that's not just a regional problem. Uh, N C D O T issues, uh, reports, uh, on communities uh, and how they rank in terms of crashes, um, and the severity of those crashes. Uh, they provide two different reports. One is for towns over ten thousand. The other is for towns with a population of less than ten thousand. Um, this is not a list you want to rank highly on. Um, and so I'll point out that Mills River, in the most recent report, uh, ranked thirty-ninth out of four hundred forty-eight communities, uh, in North Carolina. Um, and has consistently ranked, uh, in the top forty, uh, over the last four years, uh, that this report was made. Um, next slide. Um, so, um, that brings us to this project and kind of the element that we want to talk about. Um, and that is kind of the idea of a median versus a five-lane road. Uh, in general, medians are seen by federal highways as what's called a proven safety countermeasure. Uh, it's something where there have, has been quite a bit of research done. Um, that shows that in general, um, when medians are, are applied to roads, uh, there is a significant reduction in serious and fatal crashes. Um, conversely, when medians have been removed from roads, um, and. Um, conversely, when medians have been removed from roads, um, and replaced with throughway left turn lines, uh, crashes and severe crashes have increased very significantly. Um, it generally shows the impact of, of this type of road treatment. Uh, I'll also note that, uh, research shows that pedestrian crashes, uh, with medians with crosswalks, uh, decreased by about forty-six percent. Uh, next slide. So, why do they matter? How does, how do they really do this? Uh, just a few high level things, um, one, medians help to reduce, uh, head-on collisions. Uh, I'll, I'll provide a little bit more on that, they help reduce left turn crashes, uh, and they give slower moving vehicles a safer place to prepare to turn. Next slide. Um, so, head-on collisions, uh, in general, uh, they only account for about two percent of all crashes. Um, but, uh, of roadway fatalities, they account for ten percent. Um, so, uh, for, for my board members, they know that I often make food-related analogies, and in general, it, the, the way I kinda put it was, this is like you, a food that you get very rarely, but you are, the, the times where you get sick from food, it's from that. Um, these are crashes that are much, much, much more likely to result in a bad outcome for the people involved. Um, and so, um, that is one type of crash, uh, left-in, left-out crashes, um, they account for, uh, about twenty percent of crashes um, and thirty-six percent of motorcycle crashes, um, and overall, ten to twenty percent of severe and fatal crashes. The bottom line, so, head-on collisions, um, those are found to be dramatically reduced um, by the, uh, application of a median. By, by more than ninety percent, yes, yes. Um, so, yeah, medians, they provide that buffer um, between vehicles moving in opposite directions, that is how they help to reduce those head-on collisions. Uh, with left-in, left-out crashes, they provide those brakes in the median, so that those turning movements are generally more predictable. Um, and so you know where people are going to be making those left turns, uh, on the other side of the road. Um, and with those left-in, left-out cra- crashes, research has shown, um, that they're reduced by thirty to fifty percent with the addition of a median. Next slide. Um, and so, uh, what this image shows is that, in general, the way that it works is it reduces what's called conflict points uh, on the road, uh, with five lane and undivided roads, again, there's a lot of turning movements, um, that are made uh, accessible to people. Um, with the median, again, it helps provide that buffer between cars moving in opposite directions, uh, helping to avoid those head-on collisions, uh, but again, also makes those, um, those left-turning movements a little more predictable. Um, and allows those people that are turning to have somewhat of a buffered area, um, where they're a little bit more protected. Um, next slide. Um, so, one thing you all asked us to look into was, uh, specifically farm vehicles, uh, crashes and medians. Um, I'm, I'm sad to report that there is very, very limited research, uh, out there, specifically on, on farm vehicles and the application of medians. Um, so, um, but a little bit of just general things, um, there are rear-end crashes. Uh, I'll have a little bit more on that, um, but rear-end crashes in general are less likely to have severe outcomes uh, for people involved in the crash. Um, head-on crashes and what's called side, side angle crashes, um, are more likely to be severe, especially when farm equipment is involved. Uh, so specifically, think of, um, a, a tractor trying to make a left turn, I, I know, uh, you know, having to make kind of that wide turn, sometimes people mistake it and try to pass on the left. Um, that can be, uh, an ugly crash with farmer, farm vehicles involved. Um, also in general, crashes involving farm vehicles, um, few different numbers I found, but um, they're more likely to result, uh, in a fatality from that crash, three to five times more likely than your, your typical crash. Uh, next slide. So, um, to point out, with rear-end crashes, they make up about thirty percent of all crashes on the road. Uh, but they only make up, uh, or of the severe and fatal crashes, only six point five percent of those um, are from rear-end crashes, i.e., it's a fairly common crash type, um, but it's not one that often results in severe and fatal crashes. Uh, again, head-on crashes, uh, two percent of all crashes, but of the severe and fatal crashes, that's ten percent of your crashes. Um, there's more energy involved, um, and, um, when you think about what a five lane does, it enables vehicles moving in either direction to share the same space. Um, next slide. So, uh, another thing we talked about, uh, is kind of where medians work already, uh, one thing to point out is, is right here in Mills River. Um, on NC two eighty, um, there is a median divided section just to the west of the French Broad River. Uh, since twenty fourteen, looking at severe and fatal crashes from NC DOT's, uh, database, uh, there's been one severe crash, um, zero fatal crashes. Um, in the five lane section, uh, just to the west of there, uh, in that same time period, there's been seven severe crashes and three fatal crashes. Next slide. Thanks, Troy. Um, so, uh, also, um, uh, NC DOT publishes, uh, crashed, it's crash statistics, sorry, um, on different types of roads, um, and overall, uh, they provide this report, um, it is not the most uh, attractive of reports to look through, uh, it's a bunch of pages that look like this. Um, but from that, uh, they look at the difference of, of what they're saying is a four lane, uh, undivided road uh, with a center-left turn lane, uh, versus a four or more lanes divided with, um, controlled access. And so, uh, in general, the rates are about, the rates for fatal crashes are about fifty percent higher uh, on five lane roads in North Carolina, um, than a four lane divided. Um, so the way to think about that is, you know, if you are seeing six fatalities on a five lane road on a very similar road, uh, that's four lane divided, you would anticipate about three over that same time period. Uh, next slide. Um, we also talked about, um, speed limit reductions, um, and, um, from, from the research I pulled, it's, you know, uh, uh, in general, it's, it's not a bad idea, um, speed plays a critical role in safety, crash risk, and crash outcomes. Um, so, from, uh, a report called Speed and Crash Risk, uh, they note that a one percent increase in average speed results in approximately a two percent increase in injury crash frequency, a three percent increase in severe crash frequency, and a four percent increase in fatal crash frequency. So in general, the faster your cars move on a road, the more likely there are to be crashes, and the more likely those crashes are to be severe. Next slide. Um, however, uh, in another report, um, from federal highways, um, uh, one thing they found was that, uh, on average, um, when speed limits, when just the speed limit posted speed limit was changed, um, that didn't mean that traffic totally shifted that way. Um, so what they found is that average speeds changed by about twenty-five percent of the changes to the posted speeds. So, i.e., if the posted speed limit on a road was reduced by ten miles per hour, if you took it from forty to thirty, um, the observed speeds on that road, on average, only changed by two and a half miles per hour. Um, so, i.e., I'll, I'll say that speed lim- limit reduction can definitely help, it's definitely a major part of crashes. Um, but, eh, in, in general, from the research that we looked at, it's not a replacement for safety countermeasures. Um, next slide. Um, and, uh, another thing, um, that, that's kind of been brought up is the idea of, well, if we encounter crashes, that's something that we can go back and retrofit later, um, again, to, um, the, the members that have served on the MPO board, uh, the last five to six years have been a difficult five to six years. Um, so what this chart shows is cost increases and general inflation, the red line shows uh, inflation to the construction industry, specifically, uh, highway construction costs. Um, and, uh, the blue and green lines and the orange line are more of kind of your average inflation rates, so while we've talked a lot about the inflation over the last several years, uh, highway construction inflation has been really significant. And for us at the MPO, what we've seen is our construction projects have increased in costs year after year, uh, and it's led to us cutting a number of projects, uh, from the region, many of those that, you know, uh, we've heard from the public that these are projects that are very much wanted and needed. Um, so, in general, um, our ability to go back and fund projects later uh, has been greatly diminished. Um, our, we have fewer projects on the books than we did just a few years ago, uh, to help deal with the safety issues, uh, as well as the growth and congestion in our region. Um, and so relying on a retrofit at a later time, um, is, is a, is going to be a challenge. Um, next slide. Um, so, what we can do now, um, another thing that was kind of asked about, you know, why is this being brought up? Um, eh, in general, from talking with DOT, um, about whether or not a median could still be entertained on this roadway project, um, I, I think we were told that, you know, they, they'd really like to see something from the town of just signaling interest, um, so that, you know, engineers, designers cost money. Um, you know, they aren't totally wasting time and money, uh, on something that, that ultimately isn't wanted. Um, and, you know, some things that, just, I'm not a designer or an engineer, I'll just say that as a preface. Um, but, you know, look into the idea or the need for wide openings for large vehicles at strategic locations. Uh, look into signing to advise drivers of slow-moving vehicles, uh, and look into lighting needs at strategic intersections to reduce crashes, uh, especially at times with low lighting. Uh, next slide. Um, but in general, um, you know, what, uh, the, the kind of catalyst for this discussion um, is to reconsider the application of a median, uh, on this project to avoid future safety issues. Um, and just, in general, see if a median, um, and the median breaks that could be designed uh, can work with the community's needs and concerns. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have another presentation, I think, on the NC DOT.
Well, thank you for having me here, I'm gonna talk about the impacts of medians, it's gonna, that, piggyback a lot on what Tristan has said before, um, originally, this presentation was gonna be given by Jeremy Chapman, who is our Regional Traffic Engineer here in the Blue Ridge Mountains, I am Suzie Moore, I am the Regional Traffic Safety Engineer, again, I'm honored to be here speaking to you guys. Uh, just, again, kind of talking about how important it is to, and this is gonna be one of the acronyms that we're gonna have to hold in our mind, RCI, Reduced Conflict Intersections, that's exactly what we're doing when we put a median down in the middle of a roadway. So kind of what I'm gonna talk about is how it connects, uh, to our mission at NC DOT and our goals, how medians connect on freeways in this particular instance, and I'll take some questions. So, just to go over, NC DOT, we want to connect people, we want to connect business, products, places safely, get from your origin to destination. Um, we have a lot of initiatives that, not only recently, but for years we've been working on, one of which is Vision Zero. And unlike a common misconception, Vision Zero does not work to reduce, uh, serious injury. It works to absolutely eliminate serious injuries on our roadways. Uh, we want to improve the reliability and connectivity, we want people to know their roads and drive them safely. So, one of our goals is the Strategic Highway Safety Plan, um, it's, it's to reduce all fatalities and serious injuries by half, by twenty thirty-five, moving towards zero by twenty fifty, so this is our goal. And how does the median play into it? This is Vision Zero, um, it's very important that, not only we are reducing these, we need to understand. Humans make mistakes, when we're driving, we make mistakes. So as engineers, what we're trying to do is create designs to make sure that those mistakes don't cause serious injury or people's life. So, humans are vulnerable, responsibility is shared, safety is proactive, we have to work on making sure that our designs are thinking of the people that are driving them. So how, how does this look like in our, in our streets? Um, as we've said, medians, they separate the traffic, they usually separate high-speed traffic that are going in opposite directions, very simple, we've seen medians. Um, but we do have some, uh, alternatives where, sorry, as you can see in that second picture, that is what we call a crossover. So even though we do have a median in that intersection, we allow through the median nose for them to make left turns in. What we find that reducing the co- conflict points of the side street is the most critical. For example, I live on a street that I have to come out, and it is a two-way left turn lane section. And I have to do, even though it is, there is no median there, and there is no appropriate U-turns designed by engineers like they would be in a corridor like this, I have to make a right and make a U-turn to make a left, because I cannot get a gap. And we'll see, I think there is a picture. This is kind of the purpose of the median of non-free highways, we facilitate left turn lanes, they're only crossing certain, we could also signalize certain parts of it, for example, opposing traffic can be stopped while the left turns are safely going on. Median width matters, um, so, the total crashes here being one, a standard, uh, barrier being ten feet, is, so every time we go, crashes to twenty feet with, we reduce it by point five, so thirty feet, we go to point nine one, to forty feet, we go point eight seven. So, more median we have, the less severity of crashes we also have. Other, so, we also, designing U-turns is very cr- critical, so we have a U-turn restriction here for, uh, left turns into it, uh, where we will allow U-turns, it is designed for whether it's appropriate for a passenger vehicle or a, a truck, or, as we've talked about, farming equipment, it needs to be designed for the vehicle using the roadway. So this is one of the examples that I was talking about, this is kind of exactly what, I Henderson Road, everybody knows, um, there is no access control, and our roadway, uh, manual uh, points out how much spacing that we need to have between signalized and unsignalized intersections to create safe gaps for people to come out of their driveways properly. And, uh, just because everybody has access, does not mean that, uh, that businesses are being, uh, the businesses are profiting from this. A lot of the times, we would rather get your customer to you safely than, um, create a conflict point in front of your driveway. So, we have another poor example here, uh, it's, we see driveways, the longer lines are signalized intersections, and there's multiple driveways coming across. So, access management by creating So access management by creating these gaps allows you to have, and the more you know the road, once an RCI corridor comes and you know that there is a median there, and the more you drive it, you will become familiar with how to drive it. Um, we are giving local drivers an advantage of of really baking a safe maneuver out of their residential and commercial driveways. So this looks a lot better, right? Let's give vehicles some space. Uh, a lot of the times, if even they cross the median, before they get to another vehicle and creating a serious injury, they're stopped by another uh, object, whether we have delineators or, or, or some way to stop anyone crossing or going in the wrong way in a highway. But these are, again, I believe the same as Tristan has showed, the statewide average crash rate. We're looking at four or uh, more lanes undivided, and he had circled it. Uh, you are a lot safer on a five-lane divided highway than you are in a two-lane and median two-way left turn lane. Um, now I think we see this a lot in, in our local community now. So that is our four-lane divided, five-lane continuous left turn lane, and a four-lane divided section where we have the best favors. Considering Vision Zero, there is more users to roads than vehicles. Um, we want to consider pedestrians when we're crossing five-lane highways. Do they have somewhere in the mid-block that they can stop? This allows us to create safe pedestrian crossings across a corridor as well. Because we, and, and it also creates refuge for vehicles as well when they're, they're allowed to, but it actually creates pedestrian refuge. Another great thing about it is drainage, a lot of, oh, sorry. Uh, a lot of our topography here creates issues for water sitting on our roads. Uh, once we have a median in the middle, it creates another drainage point. So if we cannot get the road, uh, water off the road to the side, we can get them to the drainage structures in the middle of our median. Um, it again, keeps hazards away from travel lanes. Uh, it creates space for disabled vehicles and emergency response. Uh, it looks good aesthetically. Instead of all the cars being mushed together, we're spacing them out. We're giving people room for error. Long-term assurance of access control and protect mobility. If we're designed correctly, each of the businesses will have assurance that they have access control to our state-maintained roads. And operations in traffic flow, there's a lot of studies that show signalized corridors like this are actually faster. They carry more capacity. But I'm a safety, a safety engineer, so they're safe. That's what matters. Median plays a role in helping us achieve significant reduction in fatal and serious injury crashes.
Questions for Susan?
Any questions?
Is there any more presentations?
No, we're, I was going to explain, let me step up here.
Just so everybody can hear me here, uh, I did put a, a, an information packet together for you per your request for many things. In that information packet, uh, you will see uh, the economic effects to access management techniques in North Carolina. A study performed by NC State of these practices that we've already uh, put into the state. They've interviewed business owners and stuff like that, access. So you have that data in this report to review at your convenience. I'm glad to discuss it with you should you have questions uh, after you get a chance, an opportunity to review that. Also provided some additional uh, safety information, federal uh, FHWA guidelines for you to reference. Uh, also have included for you some QR codes if you want additional information on RCIs and uh, some information also on medians that's not presented here. That way you have opportunity, it's your own leisure to go and review some of that to help you make an in-form, an informed decision and how you'd like to move forward. Uh, also in there, uh, I have given you a list of uh, only uh, Class A and fatality accidents on these sections of roadways that you can compare. The section like NC 280 with the five-lane section, and then you can see the access management. Uh, the boulevard type that we did on upward road in Hendersonville, and you can compare those accidents and the reductions in those, in those timeframes. So you can just see how those are effectively working in this area today. Um, what else is in that packet? Oh, also, one thing I did, uh, this is a farming community. Agriculture is huge. Uh, many of you know, I grew up out west, uh, so I've driven combines and tractors and tractor-traders. We still have about 6,000 acres in our family out there that we currently farm. I was uh, out for a funeral last week and got to spend a few hours in a combine, so I was in a happy place there through that day. That being said, though, um, I did uh, attach all the special provisions, the state laws that apply to agricultural tractors and the use of them on state roadways. I think it, once you get a chance to get into review those, it may be interesting uh, to see um, what's required, what's allowed and what's not allowed. Uh, specifically, I know we've had discussions about the five-lane section. Uh, general statute clearly states that tractors are just to drive on the right side of the road. So I know that those have been the issues that we've dealt with. I just wanted to give you guys all that information for you to review at your convenience. If there's anything there that we can address or ask questions of, uh, we're glad to do that. Uh, also, as discussions, we talked about discussing um, possible redesign and stuff like that. We have very specific sites where we need agriculture access to a field, right? So in this median, there are many treatments that we can apply as the department, whether that be a traversable median or a lower median. So you can get your equipment in and out at a specific location. So those are all conversations we are glad to have that can apply to a median um, divided median section. Um, and just, I don't know if you're thinking about the numbers, but right out here, our 2024 AADT counts 13,000 cars a day, average. Over a year, 3.7 million cars come down this road. It's a lot of opportunity for people to make mistakes and access to happen. So just giving you this data so you can think about it as you move forward on your decision on how you would like to see this happen. So again, if you have questions as you review this data, please reach out to us. We have, have additional planning staff here from the department as well. If you guys have questions tonight, we are glad to uh, address those and are, are in the future, glad to do that as well.
Troy, I've got a question if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
How long is the stretch of roadway we're talking about?
From?
And I, I know, putting you on the spot. Yeah, from NC 280 to Schoolhouse.
Schoolhouse, yep, that's it.
7,000 feet?
One point two miles.
So that's about six, less, around 6,500 feet. Okay, and that's broken up by Banner Farm Road. Which is about 3,000 feet. Maybe.
It wouldn't be in the middle of it.
It's not in the middle, it's closer to that end, so it's about 2,000, 2,500 feet. So Banner Farm Road is planned to get a traffic signal? Is that correct? It's going to be, or is it plan, I mean, under the four-lane with the median? Banner Farm is still going to get treatment with the traffic, okay?
I have the median plans and the non-median plans for the public meeting that was held several years ago. They are laying right here for you guys as your reference. So we also brought those, apologize if I forgot to mention that to you, so.
Okay.
Yes, Banner Farm uh, was, has a single design.
Has traffic signal.
Traffic signal.
So it's broken up.
Correct.
And at Banner Farm, is there a plan for a U-turn?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got about 2,000 feet with the opportunity to make a U-turn. And we've got the rest about 4,000 feet with the opportunity to make a U-turn. Cause Schoolhouse, it is still going to be signalized.
Right.
And will there be a U-turn there?
Right.
So we're talking about 4,000 feet, then about 2,000, 22, 2300 feet, something like that. Okay, so that's, I just want to get in my head the scope of this project. We're not talking from here to Hendersonville. From Schoolhouse to Hendersonville, it's going to be four-lane divided median, period.
Right.
That's not up for discussion. Just talking about inside-town limits. Okay, there was a lot of talk tonight about proven safety countermeasure. And when we're talking a proven safety countermeasure, that isn't just decided. That's something that there's data to back it up. As engineers, we, we live by data, right? The flip side of that is where there are issues, where there are crashes and fatalities. We all know people. Unfortunately, we all know someone. And for our, our first responders, you have to deal with that. And God bless you for, yeah, and even at DOT, we, we worked crashes. So the proven safety countermeasure either prevents or makes it less, less of an issue, less severe, is the word I'm looking for. And that's backed up by data, that's backed up by practice, and that's backed up by what you've seen at upward road.
Correct.
Um, how about the convenience? How about, you know, 2,000 feet, 4,000 feet, where you can't make a left turn? You know, that's, that's always a concern, people, you know, I want to be able to make a left turn out. But with the proven safety countermeasure versus the left turn crossing two lanes of traffic to enter a third lane of traffic, which you're not supposed to accelerate in, to get to that fourth lane of traffic.
Right.
Does that, does that make sense? So to cross one lane of traffic, you need a certain gap. To cross that second lane of traffic, you need a longer gap. Plus, you got to make sure the person that you can't see yet, because they're blocked by the person in the lane closer to you, is not speeding up, because they're in the left lane, they go faster as you're going, so that you've got to have that gap. Then the person coming this way, you've got to have that gap in order to get into that lane. Because regardless of what was said last meeting, you cannot accelerate legally in the center turn lane. We all do it, we all do it. But that is part of what goes into the proven safety countermeasure. Correct, Mike? So you know, where are we faced at to make our decision? And I'm sorry, I'm filibustering and I'm asking you a question, so I apologize for that. But so the question is, you do have the data to back it up, you presented the data to back it up. And it comes down to what, what is a safety countermeasure?
And I provided much of that data for you to review on your own as well. And again, we realize that, hey, we've got an issue with right here. Let's talk about it, right? We have our program design staff here, maybe we make some adjustments from the original design. Those are discussions we can have. We have, you know, we have a lot of tractor access on this one field at this location. We can address that. We can look into that. We can, we can address that easily. We are willing and want to have those conversations if that will be helpful for y'all.
Sure, yeah, we talk about roads that are built for access, roads that are built for mobility, which means you're driving through. And you've got 13,000 vehicles a day driving through here.
2024.
And most likely, 10% of Mill's River, but the rest are driving through.
Hang on, that's, that's cool. Well, that's lots of.
How much does that increase by?
Depends on development.
Okay.
Roughly about 2% in this area.
Roughly, yeah.
Per year.
What I'd like to do at this point is I'd like to get some of this public input that they've come for and see if it stirs up any questions that we can help them with. And while they're gracious enough to come and visit with us, let's get them up.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just, uh, Mr. Limpus with Ag Advisor, he's also with us on the panel as well.
Okay, let's get him first then.
My name's Bert Limpus, I'm delighted to be here. It is for me, uh, as an immigrant and a US citizen by choice, an incredible opportunity to talk to our local government that makes the decisions. We have discussed this at length in 2018. And the ag community was clear and still is very clear that we want to stick to what we agreed to in 2018. And again, this is where we have our five council members and they make the decision. We can let you know, and we will, I'm sure there will be other speakers that will clearly say what we would like to see, and that's basically what we agreed on in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm looking at my list here, um. I know Jimmy Callen, you care to start? I know you're on here both times, so I know I got the right one on that deal. And I'll give everybody a chance that's here to speak, don't worry.
I was sitting here thinking, and Bert took the words out of my mouth, that I'm blessed that you are willing to serve as council. And I'm blessed that Mills Rivers Incorporated is a town and we can have these conversations and decide locally what goes on in our community versus at the county level or, or above. That's a blessing to us all. Thank you for serving. Uh, it seems to me that the council visited and revisited this issue. Council made a decision to make up the town council change before the road got built. We all thought this was settled. I encourage you to not revisit the project. We know what people in the town want, we know what the farmers want. The people spoke, council listened, let's move on. The road didn't change, the community didn't change, the council changed. Uh, I wonder who brought this up, but I don't know why we're playing a rerun. If the road had already been built, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Because the road got delayed, it allowed more talk. I did have a question about maybe the difference in price per foot of just paving five lanes versus all the concrete up and down the road. And also was mentioned about a traffic light at Banner Farm. We all know Banner Farm Road needs a traffic light. I'm glad that I don't drive a road tractor every day and have to make that turn. And there's probably not many of us in this room that could do that on a regular basis without buying a telephone pole. Something should have been done about that a long time ago. But you talked about doing, you know, maintaining the light at Schoolhouse Road. I really think whatever happens, I hope you stick with the plan, or whatever happens. You could think about a light at Hooker Lane as well, because uh, Hooker Lane is going to be used more and more as a cut-through road, and it is the road that a lot of agricultural goods are, are moved on. Uh, it's not going to get less traffic, it's going to get more. And whichever route you go, and you know which route I want, but whichever route you go, think about a light at Hooker Lane. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Mr. Foster.
Well, most of you know where I stand. But I sat in this very room back in 2018 and all. And we had the same discussion, more or less. And at that time, when they talked about the four-lane, I didn't think it was a good idea then, and I still don't. What I thought would be a good idea is to do with 191, what they did with Howard Gap Road. Uh, I know it used to be a nightmare, I travel it quite often. And what they did with there, they went in there and they solved the problem. They widened the lanes, they put in the back path everybody wants without disrupt, disrupting the whole landscape, which we have already entered that, it just grieves me when I drive down 191, and we know we're near finished. We have changed in the landscape already, and of course, uh, I think, well, I still say one key to whatever we have is enforcement of the speed limit, and this is Mills River, we in Mills River. And e- even now, it needs to be lower and with some additional enforcement. And uh, so just what the two previous speakers said, we need to keep what was agreed upon for once. And talking about Banner Farm Road, I remember, you know, I've been sitting on all these councils and on the planning board. And there was some talking, I thought it was a done deal several years ago that they were going to straighten Banner Farm Road out, put in a light. So my understanding was that it was approved and funded. Where is it at? Where'd it go? It's gone. That was way back when. But uh, But uh, and one thing that the lady mentioned, talking about drainage, gonna solve all your problems. I want to tell you a little experience I had not too long ago, I travel, travel a lot, and I travel on these kind of roads with the five lanes, I love them. And particularly when I'm traveling an area I don't know, gives me somewhere to go, just like uh, Mr. Cantrell said in the previous thing, there's somewhere to go when he's driving his tractor down the road. But I travel back and forth a lot, particularly up into Kentucky and back. And I was coming back from Kentucky a few months ago. It was raining. From here to Williamsburg, Kentucky, I drove straight through. It was, it was a rainy day. But I saw ten accidents in front of me with a concrete median where the water was not draining. So it's all well and good. If, if it drains, I guess. But we all know that don't happen. The drains get stopped up, and so that's not an answer. But anyway, I could go on and on all night long, and while, I've lived on one ninety-one here for eighteen years. Now I know, there may have been others, but I know of one, what I would call a major accident right out here. And it was caused by somebody texting and running back of a Ford Mustang, knocked them all the way across the road, totaled out two cars. But anyway, we need to keep what was agreed upon in two thousand eighteen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Uh, Mike Corn.
Appreciate being here, my name's Mike Corn, I run Small Lakers Dairy, which is the best dairy in Henderson County at this time, so. Your information is the only instrument. And I appreciate what you guys say, what you said is the, the safety factors and all that, but I think you're underestimating what farm equipment is, uh, just somewhat Jimmy suggested a red light at Hooper Lane. I think that's a wonderful idea, if with me coming out with a feed wagon. I'll give you an example, we were harvesting corn last, last week. On Saturday, we ran approximately fifty-plus trucks up and down Hooper Lane and then to the farm, and they were coming from the two farms I leased down here on the French Broad River. And if those trucks had had to come down here and turn and do all this stuff, it would have really been difficult, because it takes a wider turning radius for them than it does a tractor trailer. Because they're twenty-two feet, twenty-four feet trucks. And they can't make the turn that a short wheelbase tractor trailer can. And I think that's some of your basis for making these turns like that. For me, we go to, down to the two farms we've got down there at least twice a day. Every day. Sometimes, just like the fifty times with the silage, sometimes with haul manure, maybe twenty times down through there. And we're gonna have to come down and turn around in front of here. And maximum speed on a tractor is about seventeen miles an hour. And it takes a while to get there, so we're gonna be a hazard there, and I question whether when you make the turn, if you can't go on into traffic, are you gonna be sticking out in traffic with a trailer, the truck, the manure spreader, whatever you've got behind you? I, I see that as being a problem. Like I say, I have to do what I do to keep on with this, but I see this as being a major problem. We've already had three tractor accidents, none of them were the cause of a tractor. You know, people pass a box truck and all of a sudden they hitting the tractor getting ready to make a left-hand turn. Or when they hit that passing zone, pass Banner Farm, I mean, uh, Schoolhouse, that's just open territory there, so. And then the other thing, when you go down close to the bridge, you've got to do the same stuff, where you pull out, try to get in. There's no allowance for farm equipment. I don't have the biggest farm equipment, that's part of the reason I contract all this stuff. Some of the stuff that Super Sod's got, Flavor First Bean Growers, I mean, they've got some big stuff that has to go up and down this road. And another topic that I hadn't even thought about, and this is, this is a little off the one ninety-one. But, you know, I have about a half, half of my property line is with the farm in Mills River. What's gonna happen when they see my pile of gates, or my junk manure spreader, or my pile of tires, I mean, it says agriculture, but how long is that gonna hold it?
Long as I'm here, sir.
Well, being you ain't gonna be here forever.
You got a point.
Thank you.
All right, who else? Am I missing anybody that was on the list that didn't get called up, or anybody want to come up and speak? Come on.
Good evening, gentlemen, I have a quick question for you guys. The Butler, you said Butler Bridge did have a turnaround.
Banner Farm.
Banner Farm, Banner Farm has a turnaround. Big enough for a semi? Out. There's no bump out? That's at the red light? No, you're not gonna be able to do that. The, did you, in any of this, did you, any consideration on the tractor and trailer traffic on this road? Okay, so do you have some of the numbers? What are they? Would you give them to whoever? Because you.
Designs like this, we have a software called Auto Turn. We pretty much have the vehicle, we draw the path that the vehicle will turn, and we plop the vehicle on it and see if it hits anything. It literally simulates like the measurements exactly, the tractor trailer. We make sure that the bulb outs can accommodate those design vehicles, that's kind of what I was trying to.
I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about the bump outs, I was talking about the red light.
It don't have, it's not in the pictures that they got to see, it didn't have a bulb out shown. But just so we know, if it went that way, they would accommodate us with a bulb out if the right of way could be required or whatever.
Well. Okay, so you didn't, you didn't put tractor trailers in the design now?
Yes, we did.
So is that right or not?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, hang on, I think, I think I understand something that we might not be missing, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he's talking about, and I see where he's going with this. If they come down there and get in that turn lane, a right-hand turn lane in a median, would they be able to turn and go right back where they come from? The same direction without a bulb out? Where Banner Farm is coming into it? See, because I think that's gonna be, I think that's where he's going.
That's, that's me.
If this median goes in there, all his Hendersonville traffic is gonna want to get in that turn lane at Banner Farm and just to get right back up to Van Wingerdans. So.
Anybody, anybody that gets a truck on that side of the road, there's nowhere to turn.
They'd have to go on down.
You'd have to go down to two eighty, make a right, go to Ingles, turn around in their parking lot and come back. Yeah, I see that on the, you know, the two that are there. But you get to the red lights, you can't turn around. So it's not only there, it'll be Schoolhouse. Do we typically put divided highways in industrial areas? Because most of the research I found said that it, that typically it was not used in industrial areas where there was a lot of truck traffic. And, and that goes back to the farming side. I'm, you know, I, I know I can't make that turn at Banner, what's the name of that road?
That T's end from Schoolhouse?
And I know I can't do a UE at Schoolhouse in a tractor and trailer. If I can't do it, there's nobody in here that's farming can do it either. How many, how many entrances in the one and point two miles? Right, one, one and a half miles? How many entrances are there on to one ninety-one?
Fifty to fifty-five, I counted them.
Well, did you count them or not?
I did count.
Is it fifty or fifty-five?
Depends on how, okay. So it depends on how you want to find them, because some of them are dirt, so that's why I didn't. And out of those, over close to half are duplicated to the same property.
And what does that mean?
That means that you can reduce the number of left-hand turns into the roadway.
So you're telling, so you're telling me, you're telling me now how to use my property?
Right, right, I'm with you, I mean, so, but I agree. If they've got two driveways, I would never tell a man he couldn't have two driveways, if he's already there. You're not gonna do away with a man's driveway just because.
I'm not saying that.
I thought that's what you said, that was duplicated.
I said they're duplicated.
Okay, okay.
I didn't say we're gonna take people's driveways.
Gotcha, okay. So at this point, I think we need to have a discussion here. We're gonna be the deciding factor with this deal, okay? Do you come up, hurry up? Yep. That's okay, you're fine, that's what we're here for.
Just trying to insert a little, I know we got engineers here, Jeff and these guys, and they've done a great job. But we need some common sense in this too, so if you put this divided highway down through there with all these bump outs and stoplights, how many cars did you say we had going down through here?
Thirteen plus thousand a day.
So it was like three million a year, three point four million a year? Four point seven, so out of four point seven, you're probably gonna put another two million on Schoolhouse Road, because you're gonna have that many more people use that cut-through. You're gonna put, what, another half a million on Hooper Lane? Because they're gonna be dodging this area down through here with tractor trailers and all trying to turn around this median, you know? That's just one thing I see, we already have a lot of people cut through Schoolhouse Road now, and it's gonna triple, quadruple when you do this.
Mr. Mayor, just, uh, just a, a point for consideration, right now, what, uh, what staff is looking for is direction, so. If, there doesn't necessarily have to be a decision this evening, but we would ask for some direction on how to prepare moving forward. And.
Me personally, I'm looking for a decision tonight. So moving on, Sandra, I would love for you to start, I'm just gonna work like I always do from my right to my left.
Okay.
Any discussion, questions, discussion, any of that?
I can, but I've got a lot to say, so if you won't let them get a chance to talk first, go ahead. But I'll finish up.
I've got a big list too, you'll start.
Y'all go ahead, because you're all the ones.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
I'm gonna. Um, okay, so I did a little bit of math, but don't hold me to the exact math, okay? So in Mills River, this one ninety-one to the town limit where we're talking about, there's fifty-six ish. And it's one point four miles. So there's a driveway every hundred and thirty-two feet. The rest of the road to Mountain Home, that is gonna be divided, is there's fifty-four driveways in and out, and that's three point one miles ish. That's a driveway every three hundred and three feet. So through here is much more dense with commercial, agricultural, and residential than I see the turn, or the divided highway, I see the, the turnaround bulb outs sticking out into traffic. The, the, Saturday mornings when there's soccer games here, there's no way you can fit fifty cars leaving in a bulb out, I want to go back towards Hendersonville. My other point of contention is, I think it's called Clement Drive. There is, uh, down here to the right before the, right after the DOT office.
It goes up the hill.
Down the left, yeah.
Clement Hill.
Clement Hill.
From there to two eighty, there's twenty-one houses, parcels, whatever, that by this, I don't see a good way, we're, we're telling all those people, if you come home from Hendersonville, you gotta go to two eighty and, and go to Sitco and turn around, I don't, there's not a good answer, I don't think, for how you get there. You have to go. I don't know. My father hit on the tractor trailer turnaround. I looked up, it says forty seconds to turn a tractor trailer around out of bulb out, that's a long time if there's no light. And I don't see on the plans lights in the bulb outs. I think that's a thing. And then I, I discussed it at length last time, the agricultural tractors. To tell me to go out of Hooper Lane, take a right, get in the hammer lane to try and make a left, after doing, my tractor goes a little bit faster than Mike's, mine's like maybe twenty-two. Take a left to come back down, I, is yes, there will be less in a divided highway, on a tractor, there'll be, your, your thing was there's higher head-on collisions on a five lane. And yes, that will go down, but your rear ends are gonna go way up, I mean, it, it's not I'm driving in a tractor that can only go so fast with a slow-moving emblem with the lights on, but I can't help the lady in the minivan texting, who's gonna run all over me. I have, also have, I think I know where Mr. Moore was going with it, was go out of Hooper Lane, go down to Banner Farm, go back to Schoolhouse and go back around, I mean, I have major heartburn doing that every time with the tractor, there's there's a lot of them, I don't, at some point, we need to stand out there and count, I think, I think it would open everybody's eyes to how many agricultural vehicles pull out of Hooper Lane, go into a schoolhouse. I think that's all I got for right now.
Okay. Jeff?
Um. When the MPO looks at the numbers for Western North Carolina, and they look at the crash rates, and they look at the fatalities, and they look at how to reduce those things, one of the things they look for is something where a crash reduction factor or a safety countermeasure can be applied. And with this road out here being, I mean, the question's been asked numerous times, well, what brought this up? Well, what brings it up, and when we have our meetings, and when you were sitting there and you had your meetings, the discussion is how do we lower the fatality rate? How do we lower the serious injuries? And so what they do is they look at a stretch of roadway. If there is a way to apply some kind of a safety countermeasure, is this available, and with this particular stretch of roadway, because there's still time, then the question is, do we want to have the discussion? And that's what tonight is about, not whether or not we want a four-lane or five-lane, it's that do we want to go deeper into the discussion? And, you know, we use safety countermeasures every day. I'd say most people driving here tonight wear a seatbelt. I'd say that when the sheriff's department or the fire department is on a call, you use your lights. You use, even with the fire department now, you've got even more lights, because it's been proven those add safety. And balancing that against the need for access, I am concerned about farm vehicles, because I don't want a situation that makes it unsafe for them. I would say that if that's something that's considered, and we consider this discussion going forward, let's look at what we can do. If that means longer storage, a lot more storage for bulb outs for intersections, let's look at that. Because this is a farming community. I'm not anti-farm, especially if I want something to keep you safer. Uh, because it's not just, you think about the conversation. Uh, because it's not just, you think about the conversation in ten years after that road's built. It's gonna be, man, that's a dangerous road, I can't hardly turn left out of here. That's a dangerous road. That's gonna be the conversation, how dangerous that road is. So if there's something can be done, that's a proven way to make it safer, I think we at least need to talk about it. Because I know we'll be talking about it in ten years. So, you know, if you ask me, I'm in favor of the conversation. I'm in favor of what can we do to protect our farmers and protect people that drive through that road? Because it's likely one of us that lives in Mills River is gonna get hit by them. And five-lane roads with nothing to break them up, speeds go low. And I understand access from Fire Department, first responders to be able to get to a crash, but hopefully, it's not a head-on. Hopefully, it's not a left turn where some Vegas T-bone. And, you know, so I, I do wanna have the conversation. If we can't do something that's not gonna protect our farmers, let's, let's just go, you know, let's leave it like it is. But if there is a way at all possible to make it safer, I think we should explore that. Then make our decision with our eyes open, with all the data at hand. Okay.
Okay. Um, I put a lot of time and thought into it, and I've talked to people and got some wonderful ideas that can help keep the residents safe and the farmers safe. Um, first off, I would like to share with you a speed limit sign that was put up here on two eighty, I mean, one ninety-one at the entrance to Town Hall. And this was put up on July eighteenth for a week. And there was. Let's see, it gave a number on how many cars there was. Wait a minute, I'll find that in a second. Let me look at this one here first. Um, in a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, the top speed was eighty-two miles an hour. Um, the next, one, two, three, four speeds down from that app was seventy-eight, seventy-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-four, and seventy-four. It said that the total speeders for that week was six thousand and fifty-four. Um, eighty, the eighty-fifth percentile was forty-one to forty-five. Um. The median speed was forty miles an hour. And the total vehicles was fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirteen. That's in a forty-five mile an hour speed limit zone. Um. I think that dividing it is gonna just make it faster. Um, listening to about the medians that build water up. Um, getting water off the roads is a major problem. I've been here for four years now, and I've been discussing water since we've been here. Um, I've even got out with my own shovel and cut ditches in coming down Old Haywood Road. And got water off the road, and I went down to the DOT office and had them send engineers up there to just go take their camera and watch. And they got hit with water that went over their heads, standing on the side of the road trying to get videos. I'm sure y'all saw it. Um, they showed it down here on the videos, remember? Um, getting the water off the roads is gonna help immensely. And even with the new interstate out there, when it rains, you can't see the white lines. I mean, they're not there. It's like doing sixty-five miles an hour in a parking lot with no lines. It's just cars going randomly. We need white lines on the road. That's gonna make it a whole lot safer. And severe crashes on two eighty, um, I've seen some pretty severe crashes on two eighty. Just two weekends ago, there was a deputy rolled his truck four times because a car come off Butler Bridge Road and hit him. Now, that's pretty severe in my book. And that was two weeks ago. There's been another one since then down there on two eighty. And there was one, I believe at the end of North Mills River Road, coming on to two eighty. Um. Coming off of North Mills River Road, they've put a median in there across from Circle K. Well, the end of it's broke off. So, and it's been that way for quite a while. So when you turn around through there, if you hit it, you're hitting a piece of concrete about that high up in the air, just straight on with your car. And that, there's been a lot of them hit it, and it's very dangerous. Um. Over where Sheets is on Twenty-Five and Naples Road, they put a divider in there so that people couldn't come out of Sheets and go left on Naples Road. So they're going right and going up there and running over the end of the median. I got behind one the other morning about five o'clock, and he couldn't make it, so we had to stop and back up and turn. So I had to stop and sit there and wait on him. And coming off Twenty-Five onto Naples Road, they've run all over the median and broke sticks up, probably about seven, eight sticks by. You know, so they're not looking at how much room you need when they're putting those in, and they're really creating a hazard, I think. And from the people I've talked to, they said, I've seen the same thing. Um. Talking about where the road is divided with a grass median, um, where does the water go when you say the water runs into there?
It goes into the grass median. We could have structure in there, like catch bases, stuff, but it's more, it looks like concrete median.
Right, okay. But it's still gonna, is it gonna go underground, or is it gonna run off the other side, or?
It depends on how it's designed. We usually will try to, with gravity, move it to where we have existent structures. We'll see if that structure will take the amount of rainfall that we predict for the next ten years. There's a lot of math that goes into, um, making sure where they're placed is.
As long as they don't drain it out on farmland, because they've got enough problems with water coming off the roads and everywhere else. We've had, rain don't come in moderate amounts around here anymore. It comes in four to five inches at a time. And the bridges, where they have drain holes on the side down through there, they're plugged up. So a couple of years ago, they went through there and cleaned all those out, which helped get the water off the bridges to where you could drive through there without hitting a barricade of water, but they're plugged back up again. And just doing good maintenance on the roads, cutting the shoulders down, getting the water off, putting white lines on the roads that you can see, that will go a lot with safety. But the number one thing you can do with safety is enforce the speed limit. It don't matter what you put it at. If it's not enforced, it doesn't matter. And eighty-two miles an hour down through here is horrible. But I can promise you, as I drive two eighty every day, the average speed limit on two eighty is sixty and sixty-five and a forty-five. And they will run you over and wreck you to come down two eighty to get to Mills River Boulevard. I mean, they'll come down through there and cut you off and go, and, you know, they done tried to wreck you once, then they get to Banner Farm Road, they hit the brakes and turn, and I followed a few of them, thought, where are you going driving like this? And that's where they're going. So, I mean, the traffic is not just people living here, it's people coming through here. But the speed limit is gonna have to be under control. People don't speed through Fletcher. I mean, if you do, you know what's gonna happen. I've experienced that. I don't speed through Fletcher. But Mills River's wide open. So, um, I think that there's a lot of things we can do to get safer roads around here, and I do hope y'all will consider those.
Okay. All right. So I'm just gonna hit the highlights. So we definitely, right here, this one point two miles, we got a unique situation. We do, that's unique. I mean, you take the people in Mills River Village, nobody got up and spoke for them tonight, but we, me, the mayor, know them people's not gonna wanna come out of there and go ride to go to Harrisonville. Okay, well, but I'm speaking in your behalf, okay? You know, I'm just common sense, they're not gonna wanna do it. And my biggest fear is, you know, I'm trying to keep the tax dollars, sales tax dollars, everything else in Anderson County. And, you know, I don't want them heading on over to Airport Road. You know, I wanna keep them in, keep them here. That's what I'm gonna do. They will, I'll keep them here. Uh, the previous council that I wasn't sitting on, they voted, you know, you know, to put it back through the five lane. One else was brought up before. Uh, speed is gonna be a factor, no matter what. You know, whatever it is, either way it is, the speed will be, the factor of the speed will weigh into the crashes. Uh, lived here my whole life. Two eighty was built as a corridor to get the traffic from and to Transylvania County and beyond. You know, and it, this has worked. Uh, we had a previous mayor that hated to see a traffic light go up, hated. Because he said, that wasn't what that road's built for, move traffic. Every time he put a, every time he put a stop sign out here in the middle of this road with a light on it, it's gonna, it's gonna back them up. Okay, um, and I, you know, guys, I mean, if, if this, I know, I know, I sit on the board many years. Um. It, it's, I feel like we got way more traffic on Patton Avenue, Tunnel Road, Smoky Park Highway. You know, I'm sure that money to divide this one up, it used to be spent over there somewhere, but I know how it works. I know how it works. And I get what you're saying about not doing this one now, putting it off may never get done in our lifetime. I get that too, by sitting on these boards. But, you know, we haven't had the first soul come up here tonight and tell us that they want this thing divided. Not one, not one soul. And I represent those people. And we had a pretty good houseful for the town of Mills River tonight, I'll be honest. I'm so proud of y'all for even coming out here, because I beg you to come sometimes, and, and I still get no show, but you're here tonight. But, uh, you know, and I have to go with my gut and the ones that put me in this seat to make these decisions. And Sandra, I hope them eighty-twos and them seventy-millimeters, I hope them was professional drivers, and I'm hoping there's first responders or police or somebody, is what I'm hoping. Uh, okay, but I'm hoping.
I can.
Hoping.
I can tell you from having a property down here. And mowing the grass, I hear them coming. And I can probably tell you how fast they're going, but this was just a sign that caught numbers.
Sure. Okay, but I'm hoping, I was hoping.
It's real.
So, and saying all that to say this, I would re, and, and I wanna say one other thing, Jeff. I remember you mentioned a while ago that this is just to get a chance to, to see a picture of it. Well, but it's also my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that we don't wanna tie up valuable resources and energy and money and time with these engineers and all this and studies if we're ultimately not gonna accept the idea of it anyway. So if we, as a group right now, don't see it happening, then we don't, I don't wanna waste you guys' time, money, and effort. We done brought y'all out here two or three, four, five times. But you get to drawing this thing, it's gonna take months and tons of energy, that they got plenty of stuff to do, and I know that by sitting on these boards. So I just think we need to give these people an answer tonight, so they can either get the drawing on it or move on with it, to be honest. I just think that's the fair thing to do for them. And that's what the five of us need to decide, you know, being honest. So, I mean, I would entertain a motion to.
Can I speak first?
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely, sorry.
That's all right. So first off, thank you for coming. I know that you guys have paid, brought statistics, you validated a lot of safety data. So, as we were taking polls earlier in the audience, is there anybody in this room who disagrees that it's not safer to have it divided up?
There wouldn't be one person I would think, be, think it would not be safer.
I'm, I just asked to raise your hands. I mean, if you, if you disagree with the data and you think that it's safer to have a five lane versus if their data is wrong, if you think their data is wrong, raise your hand. The data that they presented, if you think.
I would, I wouldn't, I would never go against that. It's, it's one hundred percent.
And that's why, you're the experts, you know your data, you know your field. So. I grew up and was raised in Mills River. And this was said earlier, is that Mills River people work together. The DOT has came here tonight to offer solutions. They're not proposing one or the other. They said, we're coming to the table to have discussions about solutions that will help your farmers to cross fields, to cross medians. We're willing to look at the design to create bulbouts. We're willing to look at the design to make it safer for the seven thousand residents who live in Mills River. What I don't understand is, we were given all this information tonight, which is new information to all of us. And we're gonna say that we're not willing to take time to look at this, or to understand a picture of what this can be, that we can work together to come to the common good of the community. When we came on council, we all took it to note for the common good of the community, right? Health and welfare of people. And that's what, we put our hand on the balance there. And so our due diligence, I believe, is to work with DOT, work with the agricultural community, and see if we can find a solution. If we can, great, let's go for it. If we can't, then we go a different route. At the end of the day, we don't control this road either. DOT does. DOT can decide in ten years, guess what, you're getting divided highway whether you want it or not, regardless of what residents should be a part of. Don't have to listen to anything you say. So.
We don't operate that.
You don't operate that way, but you can, you can. That's your legal authority to do that. So my thing is, if DOT is willing to work with us, why can we not, as a community, take the opportunity to learn, educate ourselves, come together, work with them? If we can't, then that's fine, but why are we not taking the opportunity to make our community better? That's wrong.
How much would it cost to, to redraw this and come back and forth with council several times? And the community leaders and members to look at all this changes? I mean, I'm curious.
I appreciate this moment. Personal level as well, special level, special chair, four lanes divided section, far safer. Show me that it, let's say any of y'all's family, or my family, they're gonna head across the street. Any of our family members that have any access, we can say, gosh, that's true.
Can I address that, can I address that very question? Are you gonna be here? Are you gonna walk right up here and apologize when the first tractor gets hit in the ass? Or are you gonna personally come up here and do that? Because you've heard it, it's gonna happen, and that we, they're begging us not to do it. Well, they're more protected in these vehicles, these regular, everyday vehicles. I'm looking for that. I can't do that. I can tell you right now, Shannon Goss is not gonna step up there and apologize for the first one gets hurt, killed, or maimed because we, we forced them into a situation that they're not used to and not accustomed. because we, we forced them into a situation that they're not used to and not accustomed to. And I'm afraid that's what we're doing. They're begging us not to do it. They're personally begging us not to do it. And I may, and I'm, and I may have to do that. I lost a brother at twenty-three. I may have to do that. I know what the consequences are. But I know it ain't, it common sense will tell you that tractor get, and I'm not only talking about tractors. We've got pick trucks that's got people riding in the back of them that you'd never knows in there. But they're in there and they're moving slow for a reason not to throw them and their stuff on them. You know, if they're not buckled in, and, and there's hundreds, if not thousands of them a day travel these, that particular section of road.
Even if they dropped the speed limit on that section of road from Schoolhouse Road to two eighty to thirty-five and enforced it, look at the difference that would make, that would help people get in and out. It would keep people a whole lot safer. It would keep people pulling out of the river Oaks, out of Mills River Village, a whole lot safer. It would give semi trucks a better chance to judge, you know, here comes a car, they, they should be doing thirty-five, instead they're doing eighty-two. I mean, you can't judge speed at that.
I get it.
But if they'll set a speed and enforce it, that will solve the problem.
I, I live on two eighty. You ain't telling me nothing I don't know about two eighty. Well, I mean, I dread to take my tractor to the store to fuel it. I dread it on two eighty. I dread it.
They're gonna happen anywhere. People, you know, getting in the shower, but dangerous things. But we mitigate our risks, risks. What we do to mitigate is why. We're the chances somebody dropped something on my shoe, but consequence. I wear a seatbelt, I would get in a car without. I think that if we have the conversations, we're not. We're not gonna make a decision without. And we've had a decision without a conversation. So we don't even have the conversation to say, no, I wanna think. I'm just gonna vote.
I'll do it.
My vote's for the conversation. That's my vote. I'm just gonna vote out behind.
Discussion. We're having the same.
I, I don't, what, what can I do to prove to you that it's truly a safe?
Do you know what the number one rate that no one calls a tractor bomb accident is? Left-hand turns, and that's by State Farm or Farm Bureau.
Yeah, I am ten times more dangerous on the road than I am in the field.
But it's left-hand.
Be on the road more.
It's left-hand turns. But that's what they're trying to reduce.
Don't. So if you, if your tractor takes forty seconds to make a turn, then when I hear that, when I hear that, I'm worried about how long it takes you to make that left turn in a multi-lane facility while unresponsible, someone that's not responsible is driving eighty miles per hour towards you. Is that going to cause more harm to you? I'm thinking versus if someone maybe rear-ended you, and these are the risks that we have to talk about and we have to design through.
That's, that's.
When you take a U-turn, the big red, somebody gets hit there. It takes way longer than a U-turn. We're talking about.
And part of the conversation. Those are, those are options that we talked about. And assuming making your left turn, at least the tractor post will have to stop. Is that a conversation?
So, let's think about this a different way. We're still recovering from COVID, okay? Half of western North Carolina is still twelve ahead, especially the DOT sections. Is it ethical of the town of Mills River to ask him to redraw all this and spend, even if it is fifty thousand, to spend that on something that we're just, we're gonna look at on a maybe? Is it ethically okay to do that?
Standard call for us to not have a conversation. We can lower the amount of power.
But if that's the case, Jeff, if that's the case, you've lived here a long time too. I made a note. I don't hear of a lot of fatalities on twenty-five Patton Avenue and Tunnel Road. We're almost talking like we're gonna hear one of these a day. We're only talking about a one point two mile stretch where those are lengthy mile roads. We just don't hear that much here on any, we hear wrecks, but we don't hear, am I, y'all know the data, I mean, is they, uh, a hundred fatalities on those roads?
We've had two fatalities at a single intersection on Patton Avenue just this year.
Just this year?
And to, just to point out.
At a single intersection?
A single intersection.
Intersection.
That's the North Louisiana app. And so, I mean, just to point out that, you know, there's, uh, a, a, as you pointed out, Mayor, you know, there's, there's other roads in need of this treatment. And the fact is that basically every single five lane we have in the region has started to show up or has been well established on safety reports and are in plans for trying to have safety retrofits. And the list is very, very long. Um, and so, you know, the other thing I would, i- i- so to your point, yeah, though, there's a lot of roads out there that need this. Um, right now, we have a funded project on one ninety-one. Uh, we don't have a funded project on those other corridors. We're trying with a lot of them, uh, at the community's behest. Um, I'll also point out that one of those corridors that's been identified in plans is Charlotte Highway in Fairview. Um, just to note, I mean, that is a community that has undergone a whole lot of change. The five lane is not very old. Um, it's a relatively new build. Uh, but when you think about what kind of development comes in along five lane facilities where you can make left turns at any point that you possibly can, it lends itself to a type of development uh, that changes the character of places like Fairview. And now that tho- those five lanes are seeing what, much more development, are getting much more traffic, we are seeing those crashes start to take up and we are getting more requests to look into doing projects like this to retrofit those.
That's all I can explain. That's what access plan. So I'd like to do that way. I'm wondering about.
You can.
My opinion on this.
Well, with that being said, any more discussion on this?
I think we discussed the facts.
So like I say, I'd entertain some motion to table it. I'd entertain a motion to deny it or to leave it as is, or I'd entertain a motion to send it to the drawing board.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Table it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd be looking for a second on the table.
I'll second.
I got a second. Any discussion?
I'm, I'm gonna be another one, that's because I feel like we're beating that first.
Well, I'm just, well, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to do the ethical thing here, I think. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm a voted in person. I hear from my constituents out there what they're looking for, you know.
Can I withdraw my motion?
Uh, it's not a second. No, once you make it, you gotta write it down.
Let's go ahead and vote it.
So, any more discussion on it? So, uh, we got a first, we got a second. Any more discussion? There none? All in favor of tabling it? Uh, anybody against tabling it?
Aye.
So everybody's against tabling. Okay, so. Uh, entertain another motion. You got two different options left.
I make a motion that we, uh, gather further information from DOT, work with them to come up with potential assignment.
A first, second, any discussion? Discuss.
We don't even have all the information and we're gonna make a decision. That's.
You call me foolish, you don't think, but I'm common sense, I'm a common sense kinda guy. They're telling you can get it now.
This right here's the same stuff it looks like that we got in the manager's notes. And it looks like the dates on it are about the same too, from two thousand nine. You know, so I sat down over the weekend and read, that was a hundred pages that I read. So I feel like I'm pretty well versed in it, but, you know.
You can tell how you're looking.
Oh, I know that, I know that. I know that, I'm just, it's all through, any more discussion? Okay, no more discussion. All in favor of sending this on to DOT for redraw?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Alright. So, it got denied, any use to even go any further?
You gotta make a motion.
Yeah, you gotta make a. Okay.
That's what, that's what, okay, that's what he's looking for. Anybody make that motion? Well.
Denying going on.
We've got a, we've got a draw plan that they're planning on building, so we're just gonna tell them to use that plan, I would assume. Okay, that's something like a sense, it's already in play, but go ahead.
So, if, if, that, yes, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor and Council, yes, so from our, from our understanding right now, that the current one ninety-one five lane is, and the resolution that's a part of that is still in place and moving forward. So, uh, if there's not an approval to change that direction, then that resolution continues. And there's no need for a vote of denial, because there's no, nothing in, in front of you to deny, essentially.
That's what I was thinking, okay.
So, I mean, for the record, I'm not taking a lot of.
Like, no problem. Alright, all, all is good, we're moving.
Can we take a break?
Yes, sir. Five minute break.
Can we make a motion not to come back to this again?
Well, no.
Well, I'm checking.
Absolutely not. Matt, if you would, we'll move on to C, adoption of the personnel policy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, uh, uh, it seems that the personnel policy isn't a, isn't keeping them in the, in the audience right now, but I find it incredibly exciting and, uh.
We got a few that's gonna be interested in this.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, uh, just as a reminder, uh, at the last meeting, I presented a draft, uh, personnel policy for your review, consideration, discussion. Try to answer questions that you may have. And then, uh, at that meeting, uh, you all directed me to bring it to this meeting as well for further conversation. At that time, I also mentioned that there were potentially a couple of other updates that needed to happen. Um, and so I'm gonna present those again to you this evening. Uh, again, as a reminder, this personnel policy, we'll go through this. It's, it's really the guiding document that I utilize in order to handle the chief administrative officer, uh, position that you all have appointed me to serve. And so, uh, however, at the end of the day, you all vote on what you would like that personnel policy to be. So that's why I'm presenting it to you all today for your consideration, but if there are questions or concerns or issues, ultimately, you all get to decide how we move forward with the personnel policy. I have Peggy Rowe from Craft HR Solutions with me. As a reminder, uh, Craft HR Solutions is our HR consulting firm. And I just want to thank, uh, Peggy for her help throughout this, from her subject matter expertise, as well as with our legal counsel, uh, Sharon Alexander, her legal expertise. And then I really want to take one more moment and thank, uh, the, uh, policy committee for their, uh, for their contribution, for continuing to weigh in, provide input, provide context to what you see before you today. Let's see, I hit the button, let's see if it'll work for me. Alright. So again, as we talked about last time, as I mentioned, the organizational personnel policy is really talking about hiring, employment, pay, benefits, how we're gonna do holidays, leaves of absences, general employer expectations, what happens in those, uh, and those opportunities if we have to separate or, you know, or terminate from an employee, uh, that personal conducts and grievances, as well as records retention. So again, it is our guiding document for most of the administrative work that we actually do. The policy here in the town of Mills River was, uh, originally adopted in two thousand and seven. There have been minor updates again in twenty twelve and twenty fifteen. And then as a reminder, uh, earlier, the sheet, uh, or, uh, since two thousand and twenty-four, there have been some updates that we've done, uh, uh, Article One and Article Three, as well as the introduction. This is now looking at the full package to make sure you're able to review it at one time. I'm not gonna go through all this, I went through it last time as well, and I know, uh, it is getting late in the evening, but just as a heads up, we started, we kicked this off in August of two thousand and twenty-four. And throughout this process, it's been point of, uh, uh, a point of major priority for us to try to make sure we bring it to you all for consideration. Again, it's been slightly over a year since we kicked this process off. Uh, as promised, uh, the, the updates, there've been a couple of updates for your consideration, that's a part of this. First and foremost, the parental involvement leave section. It came to our attention that North Carolina General Statute ninety-five twenty dash twenty-eight point three, uh, states that, um, uh, that states that employers shall grant up to four hours per year leave for any employees, a parent, guardian, et cetera, et cetera, for school-aged children, so that the employee may attend or otherwise be involved at that child's school. Uh, after consideration and looking into that and talking with legal as well, we added that into Section twenty of Article Six, which is talking about holidays and leaves of absences. Sorry, I clicked too fast. Yes, sir.
Question. Is that four hours total regardless how many children they have, or per child?
It is four hours per child. Yes.
Paid or unpaid?
I'm sorry?
Paid or unpaid leave?
So again, uh, working with our legal, uh, working with legal counsel, it is paid leave. So, yes, yes, ma'am.
I've got a question here on this document. It says, because I printed it out, nothing in this section shall require an employer to pay an employee for leave taken under this section. Which legal counsel told you that it should be paid?
Yes, so again, uh, with this situation here, the, uh, when we first looked at this as well, we said, there's no cash value to this value, to this leave. So you can't bank this leave. When you separate, like vacation leave, you get paid out, there's a monetary value to that leave. However, with the fact that we provide vacation leave and sick leave, other items that are paid, uh, in the, and again, I dare not speak specifically, you know, if Ms. Alexander was here, um, you know, in her own words, but in working with her, there are creative liabilities for the town if we do not offer it as paid leave, because we offer paid leave and other options. Specifically, uh, the, if we are to say, hey, you can take vacation, and that's paid. But if you're using it specifically for, uh, going to an activity for your children, and you must use that unpaid leave, because that's what it's specifically for, you open up the town for liabilities and other concerns. So when we read that statute about having no value, uh, in our, in our estimation and working with legal counsel, it is, there's no cash value, monetary value of that leave, however, it is paid leave, uh, for the town.
So if a employee has no kids, uh, is it just a benefit that they're never gonna get, or, you know, what's the deal with that?
Yes, and, and, and Ms. Rowe, if you want to jump in as well?
Yes, thank you. Yes, there would be employees who do not have children, who would not have the opportunity. In the same way that you're, that you have family medical leave and other such things where folks who work for us, um, decide not to have children, they don't have the benefit of that particular type. So that is accurate.
One of the things that we have thought about, uh, is the fact that, you know, this is a general statute, so by, by law, by North Carolina law, this is something that is in place for people, uh, for, uh, parents who have children or act in that capacity. However, there's an opportunity, uh, for, uh, a, uh, a more lenient type of leave, a community service type leave. And that community service type leave could be used for this or for other type options, at least from my, uh, uh, from my, uh, answer, uh, from my quick review of that, which would be allowed for, you know, those types of larger scale items.
Yeah, and I was just gonna add, if that is important to you, you certainly have the opportunity to offer other types of leave to, to people who don't have children. You always have that prerogative. You can always do more for people, um, than the law requires. So you certainly could do that if that's something that you all want to.
Well, if we wanted to say, okay, if you don't have kids, if you want to go volunteer somewhere for four hours, we're gonna pay you to go. And then the people with kids say, well, you know, I'm going to see my kids at school, but I'd like to volunteer for a race or something, you know, and I'd like to get paid. Is that gonna be a legal problem? Are they gonna say, well, you've got kids, so you can't do that?
Yeah, I, and I would defer to the legal counsel on whether it's a legal problem. I think it could be an employee, um, relations issue, just, you know, people measuring how much leave one person gets versus another. And if that's something you want to consider, we, we could certainly work together to, to look at that and look at what other organizations are doing in that regard, and whether or not it's, um, a, a common practice for that to happen. Um, and what are, what are the pros and cons of doing it one way versus another? That is something we could explore, if that's what your desire is.
And, and, and I appreciate that, Peggy. And the other thing that I wanted to, uh, mention, and I failed to at the beginning, is that this is a living document, so that one of the goals that we, we put forward is to make sure that we're meeting the legal requirement that we have. But that does not mean that this document is not going to be reviewed, you know, for the next twenty years. My goal, and, and is, again, this is your document to, that you will hold me accountable to, that if there is more that you all wish to have as a part of that, then we can build upon this personnel policy and quickly. In the sense of, if, you know, again, moving forward, if there's a desire either tonight or again in the future to bring it forward with that information, we can, we can amend at any time accounts, at the will of council. Um, and so I just wanted to provide that for further context.
Okay, so on this right here, when it comes back, we want to make sure we got legal, either if she can't be here, I understand, but I want it, yeah, an email or something from her, you know, stating her standing on this.
Okay.
With weighing in the possibility of the, uh, employees without kids challenging it also.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I would just say that unpaid leave is really no leave. Because if you can afford to take unpaid leave, you probably can afford not to work.
Well, four hours a year.
My child is gonna get an award at school and I want to go see it. I don't care if I get paid. But I don't get care if I get paid or not, I'm gonna go see it. Well, that's my option.
It's your option, but I, I say that in my humble opinion, as one vote, is that I agree with it being paid leave.
Okay, it's just new to us.
Well, I worked at, uh, NCDOT where I got twenty-four hours a year of community service leave. And the idea of that leave was to either volunteer somewhere legitimate, or go be with, you know, school functions. It was this leave, but it was, you know, much more hours we can afford to give. So I would like to see something for people who don't have kids or kids that are grown that, you know, to benefit as well. But I'm, I'm fine with it being paid, because again, I, I believe really that.
I'm just, I just wanted to be.
I want it to be fair. And while we've got you here, are you more up to date on the laws and everything?
Yes, but I'm not an attorney, so.
Well, no, I understand that. So are we good with paying them lunch, not to take lunch?
Yes, there's no requirement to provide a lunch break unless you have employees who are sixteen and under. Um, you are okay to do that. Now, if you are, if you are paying them, then you naturally, you're gonna expect them to take a call if they need to take a call and things like that. Whereas if it's an unpaid, you would not do that. But yes, you're on solid ground to.
And that's good with other businesses too. If you work through lunch, then you can.
If you work through lunch, you get paid for lunch. So if it's an unpaid lunch, you should not be doing any work at all.
Okay.
If you're a, um, non-exempt employee, exempt employees can, can do as many hours.
I just want to make sure, because like I said, I've never worked anywhere that said, you know, you don't have to leave for lunch and we'll just pay you through it.
Yeah.
They've all said you have to leave.
Yeah, it is unusual.
And get away from your desk.
Yes, ma'am.
Where, where I work, I get paid for lunch. You know, if I, whether I eat here, eat at McDonald's or whatever, but the idea is that I get my work done and that I don't abuse it. So if I'm gonna take an hour of lunch, I just go in thirty minutes early. And, you know, I would, it's hard to get lunch thirty minutes. You can't hardly do that unless you sit at your lunch, at your desk and eat. If you're eating at your desk, it's really hard to work. I mean, you know, I would like to see some option and maybe it's an un, uh, maybe it's not a formal, informal way, but if someone needs to go check on their dogs or go run an errand or something, to have that hour available, even if we pay half of it. So, but I don't know how to do that.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Moore, I, I appreciate that. The, um, what, if I may, I'm gonna address two things real quick. The, the first one, um, really about the, the item you just mentioned, is that, uh, as the town manager, it's within my purview to be able to set office hours, especially for the employees. And so that allowance allows me that flexibility to have conversations with staff if there are circumstances that may be helpful, uh, in the, in the matters that you have, as long as we're also covering the requirements that are expected from those positions. Um, I've also worked in organizations and it's something that we've talked about at, uh, the beginning stages with an internal flexible work schedule policy, where they actually potentially have a schedule that allows that kind of set piece where you have an hour unpaid lunch, but you have, you have signed essentially a document stating you're gonna take a one-hour lunch, in this example, and that, and then that's going to be your standard, but it's within the purview of the organizational, uh, personnel policy that you could be paid for your time. So there is flexibility that's built in there, that's also built within my, uh, my authorities, um, to be able to assist in those types of situations. It's just whatever organizationally you all would like to set as the guidelines for that, and what the expectation is for, for personnel when they come to join the organization, and then everything else is a conversation. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention real quick is around, again, this unpaid, um, around the unpaid parental involvement leave. One thing that I also, uh, meant to mention before as well, is that we do have some employees that are salaried employees. And so one of the other logistical questions that we also worked with is, by design, we expect people to work forty hours a week. And if you don't meet forty hours a week, then you must use other time, sick, vacation, comp time, what have you, to equal that forty hours, because you are a salaried employee. If, and again, I, uh, and, uh, uh, from my, my, from my conversations with Ms. Alexander, it is my understanding that putting all the other legal concerns aside by making it unpaid, from a logistical perspective, trying to understand how to pay a salaried employee less than forty hours, when their job is to make it to a forty-hour paid period, also creates hurdles that would make it difficult to move there. That is a secondary part to the, the legal aspect of it, but we did also explore what that would look like. And it would just create another burden, something that we can look at for sure, we're happy to do so. But that was just another conversation that we had, um, around that topic. So I just wanted to address those two items.
With us being a small town, and I think we're pretty family oriented, I hope we would never tell an employee they couldn't go see their child, celebrate a milestone in their life, whether it's graduation, um, honor awards at school, you know, such as that. You know, such as that, I, I hope we never tell them they can't, whether it's paid or not.
Yes, ma'am, understood. So what, what, what I've heard from this as well as to also be able to provide more information as well as, you know, for something that could be larger, that could potentially be. More equitable and, and, and fair across the board. Is that my understanding? This time, okay.
Is this supposed to be loco?
Yes, loco parentis, yes sir. Well, it's. Yeah, yes.
Crazy. Parents, that's me.
Acting, acting in that.
When your child's in school, the school is acting as in loco parentis.
The other item before you, uh, is an update, which is something called emergency critical response leave. One of the items that we had discussed and. Uh, with talking with staff is that we don't, you know, the, the, the proposed policy has essential personnel. Essential personnel are those kinda items where there's an emergency declaration. There's, right now at our size, there's probably gonna be one or two potentially considered essential. Where we're gonna have to be in a place to be able to react because there's a declared emergency situation. But we also know within our organization, there are times where it's not a declared emergency, but in the past, we've been relying on staff. And certain staff to be able to come in to prepare, to make it safe for the office itself to open. So for instance, most of the time. This is specifically around ice events, snow events. The roads themselves are plowed, the essential personnel of the public works, you know, departments, et cetera, and NCDOT crews have handled that. But once you get onto the property here, making sure the town hall is safe for people to get into. Usually it can take hours beforehand before we can safely make sure that people can get into the building. And so we did our, our due diligence and looked at other organizations as well, once we heard that that was a potential concern. Um, and so we bring this to you again as a, as a, um, as a proposal for consideration, something called emergency critical response leave. It outlines, a- as it says, a procedure for employees who assist in opening of town halls specifically under what we consider emergency situations. We close town halls, about to snow. We wanna open up tomorrow morning at ten AM. How do we do that in a safe manner? There are staff that have been over the years dedicated to making sure that happens. But they, but it's not necessarily emergency declared work, but there is again, a little bit of a hazard, a little bit of safety where they're coming in before. We officially reopen. The, um, those identified employees, and again, there would be a requirement for approval for this too. Would receive an hourly pay rate, that they're normally hourly pay rate. Plus an hour of bank time that equals that time. So again, if you come in three hours early. You're salting the sidewalks, you're making sure things are safe for everybody else to come in. Let's just say it's four, you know, three or four hours worth of work. You get a bank of time that's equal to three or four hours. Now, that bank time has no cash value. You can't take it with you when you leave. It's essentially a benefit to say thank you while we're waiting on coming in. You're, you know, you're coming in before. Where we, we reopen and you're making it safe for us. And here's a little bit of time as a, as a, as a, an appreciation. Uh, again, those banked hours expire within one year. And like I said, they don't have a monetary value. By practice here, uh, in my, in my opinion, for the most part, it's going to be around those types of snow ice events. So it's gonna be a few hours here and there, potentially a couple of times a year, but it just again, is a little bit of a. Of a benefit for consideration. And, and we, we pulled this from again, some, uh, other communities in and of the area and we felt comfortable with this.
And, and these employees, do they know about these? They will get assigned, if this event happens, this is your deal to cover? I'm sure, or there'll be a group or something?
So typically what it would be within a, within a job description. So right now, our park maintenance staff are the ones that handle the opening. Of those, uh, uh, of town hall. They've been doing it by practice for years and years. And so, um, it's, uh, you know, what, one of the things we'll wanna do in the future is looking at job descriptions to make sure that they're accurate. But by practice, that's what it is. And so they would be the ones that essentially we would have a conversation if it looks like we're closing or there's an issue. They would know well in advance because it's a part of their job expectations. Um, but then again, it would have to be approved time. So, you know, uh, you know, the, uh. Nicole, in this case, would also have to make sure that there's approval. I'm aware of it before moving.
What mandates when you, if we have a snow event, that you would close town hall or the park?
Yeah, so I, so within my authority, I have the ability to close down town hall for air, for items that I feel are unsafe for staff and or the patrons. So obviously have to do it a- and, 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 uh, announce it to the mayor and to the council. But again, it depends on the situation that's coming up. Uh, over my career. We've become more and more shy of keeping people here for a long time if we know a snow or major weather event is coming in to make sure that they can get home safely. Um, but again, it's, it's by each individual situation. Um, and then usually what I do as well, because I, you know, I speak. Uh, quite regularly with my counterparts around the county, is also make sure that we're trying to coordinate that as well to where we're trying to make sure we're. Um, you know, there's not any outliers. So that, that, those are typically the things that I take into consideration.
Okay, I, I didn't know if y'all like went by the Henderson County School Plan or see you just come in and do it on your own.
Uh, no ma'am, we do, yes, uh, I'm sorry, yes ma'am. Well, so the, we do not follow a plan. Um, it is situational. Um, but it is in consultation with others. So, yeah, so, uh, at least in my practice. I do, I, I, I do not make a decision. I try not to make decisions in a vacuum. I try to make sure I have all the information. Uh, before making those decisions. Cause it is a big decision to close downtown hall.
Do they close the park down or how does, who determines that?
So, uh, so technically we can close the park down. We did it during Helene, uh, historically, uh, and, and, uh. Nicole is not here to tell, you know. She has obviously more experience here than I have on it. From my experience here, we very rarely close town, uh, we very rarely close the park. Itself, it is a road, uh, the EV stations, uh, we try to keep open twenty-four seven because we have a grant that says you have to be able to have access to. Uh, at least twelve hours a day, I believe. So we try to keep that part open. But yes, but ma- managing, maintaining the work on, at the park and at town hall, that, those operations would cease. Yes, ma'am.
And I agree, I agree. It's time to close town hall. Keeping the park open other than. Charging station. People, if they're out there gonna be damaging the turf and all that stuff. So close when you gotta. And, you know, always lean, is my advice for what is work, lean towards. Keeping people safe at home and off roads so that the DOT can do their job.
So, so what I'm hearing, just to make sure if I'm hearing from you two is, uh, uh. Is that, I mean, we do have the ability to close down those roads in Hooper Lane as well. Again, typically we have not.
No, you don't need to. I'm saying, close town hall when you gotta. I'm with you. I, I got your back. When you wanna close town hall, close town hall. Keep our people safe.
Understood.
I worked at DOT, even in the division office, by gosh, you went, snow or no snow, you went there. That's up to you how you get there. But we're not in that situation. So just, you know.
Understood.
I'm, I got your back.
Well, and as I mentioned, the essential personnel, which right now will probably be myself and one other individual, uh, but we are gonna do tabletop exercises that I've shared before. There may be some essential duties that could assign, but again, this is separate from that where it's safe enough to be on the road. Uh, last, uh, but certainly not least, there were some questions about part-time, uh, positions and temporary seasonal part-time. So we just worked on, on, on clarifying that a little bit. And then also, it also helped to determine pay expectations during, uh, holiday and emergency period. So right now, um, uh, the. During, during holidays, we have part-time employees, again, rangers that, uh, typically work on those days. So we wanted to make sure how, we want, we clarified how they would get paid. Relative to other regular part-time employees who are, you know, potentially if we ever get one, let's say, and, you know, at the front desk again. And we close downtown hall, that was very clear. This basically says if you're working on a holiday. Uh, and it's a part of your scheduled time, it's time and a half, very typical, very, very common practice. Uh, and then what we, uh, also is that if it's a, um, let's just say July fourth is on a Saturday. So we observe it on Friday, July third. Well, that July third, the observed holiday is time and a half and the, and July fourth is time and a half because that's an actual holiday. And it's very difficult and, and, and it has been very difficult to find people to work on the actual holiday as well. So again, a little of an incentive. From a cash value perspective, you're talking about, you know, an eight-hour shift of a, of a part-time employee moving up to about twelve, uh, twelve hours when you look at time and a half. But, uh, from an incentive perspective on the holidays themselves, we felt that that was, uh, something for consideration. And again, this is, uh, this is a slide just saying from a recommendation perspective. Uh, again, I know that we have more, uh, homework to do to be able to provide that type of information for you. Uh, if council as a whole decides, uh, chooses that you would like for me to table this, to bring that back at a future meeting, that is obviously the will of council. Uh, if you would like for, uh, you also have the ability to move forward as is and we can bring it forward to you at a later time as well. Or any and all types of questions and, and considerations. The only thing that I would ask is to consider win approval. That there's the, the delayed implementation of the vacation and sick leave approvals and comp time approval to January first, twenty twenty-six. This allows there to be that off-ramp, that two to three months for people to be able to plan, uh, because then again, there would be new vacation and sick accrual time. We wanna make sure that people have time to be able to adjust to that and be prepared. And then also, one of the things I mentioned last time, I went back, I talked to legal, uh, and I talked to, um, uh, I talked to our finance director, uh, Julie Osteen as well. At, to look at, um, how we can best implement that, that pay down of time approved. So comp time by design. You're supposed to pay it out for one year from when you get it. So we wanna make sure we started it off right there. But we wanna also make sure that people aren't short. Of time, right? Because that switch over, you're not gonna get those days automatically. So, uh, essentially we're talking with legal, we have an, uh, we have a form where we're gonna be asking staff where they opt in. To be able to move in, uh, move up to twenty hours, uh, of comp time through, to the new year. And then that way they know exactly what they're gonna be getting to be able to carry over. And then everything else that is banked is gonna be paid out. So that then we have that standard, like that, 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 as I mentioned last time, that kinda off-ramp barrier. Before that forty-hour threshold, it allows that flexibility. So again, working with staff and working with council, that was a way that we thought was the most appropriate way, way moving forward.
Twenty hours this time and that.
Twelve. Sorry.
Every year, same thing.
Yeah, well, I, I apologize first of all, Councilmember Kendra, I did not mean to interrupt you there. This time for the implementation, it was twenty just because there. It would be switching to the accrual basis. But moving forward, it would be paid down to twelve on June thirtieth. And the rationale for that is. If we're by law required to pay out everything that's done within a year. Then by paying down to twelve, we feel by practice, we feel fairly comfortable that everything that's been accrued. You know, you, essentially you take off the, the oldest bank. We know that we're gonna be able to hit that. And so we're always gonna be able to meet that requirement.
Makes sense.
So I believe that is what I have. I'm happy to answer any other questions. I wanna thank again, uh, all that's been involved, uh, craft HR, staff. Legal, et cetera.
And if I may, um, I just wanna commend, um, your town manager and the due diligence that's been done. To get this to, to your, um, time for approval and the involvement that he's had. And we've gone back and forth on the number of things. So there has been really a, a huge effort to make sure that employees feel comfortable with the changes. And I would also just add that. The town manager mentioned that this would be a living document. So the, the more you can make changes as they come about. Or when you realize something needs to be improved upon because of a law, make those changes so that you don't have this holistic. Review after so many years, it's a lot less on you all, a lot less of a burden if that moving forward, you kinda make the changes as they. Excuse me, as they come along. And I know you're, you've been here a long time, so I'll be quiet now. You're probably brain dead, but, um, just, you know, kudos to. Your team for the work they put in.
By practice, our goal is that this will be co- this will be reviewed every two years at minimum to see if there are any issues. And if there are, we'll bring it forward. But I suspect that there, it may come forward as.
But if state law or something pops in, we're gonna take care of it as soon as possible.
Yes, sir, exactly.
No plan survives initial contact, so. Implement a plan and immediately you can find something and do better, so.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion, we to, uh, send it as is and make modifications later. Table or the night?
Find a favor, let's get it going. And then. Things come up we need to address. Yeah, I think what we got here is better than what we had, so. I'll make a motion. Y'all ready? I'll make a motion that we approve the personnel policy. To adopt the personnel policy effectively leaving the following exemptions. Vacation sick leave accrual rates become effective January first, twenty twenty-six. Incentive for time increments for affected employees become effective January one, twenty twenty-six. And then the policy will supersede previous personnel policies.
Uh, first of all, say any discussion, any question, any negotiation.
Like I say, man, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm good with it, but yeah, I got a little heartburn over the four hours of paid to get what your kids. Do their thing, good part of being a parent. You have to make sacrifices. Uh, so I'm gonna let not them do that or can't do that. And I feel like it's. Just wrote me the wrong way right here. But in saying that, uh, that's all I got to say.
Everybody good? Got a motion anymore? Just got, oh, all in favor? You wanna say something?
Well, I was gonna say, I would be interested in hearing what you're gonna do. Is it gonna be for the volunteer? Paid volunteer time somewhere?
They're gonna bring it back to us, I hope, and it will, it could be something that we add in. Improving as we go, thank.
That is my understanding. And what we're, what we will do, that is our homework. We will bring it back and as soon as we feel comfortable, it will be before this council.
And then doing that draft, and I would like to see it be that these four hours, and if your parents have got kids, you can use it for that. Or you can still go volunteer. Cause sometimes you ain't gonna use four hours a year, especially if you got a bunch of kids. So I'd like to, yeah, volunteer is not a bad thing.
Understood.
Okay, alright. So with that being said, we got a motion, we got a second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you, um. On D, the MPO tack discussion, so. I made mad aware of this. I've kinda run it by everybody, I think. Uh, I got an email the other day from. Jana at Henderson County Transportation Advisory Committee. That we was breaking bylaws by me sitting on the tack committee as a member. Not sitting on the MPO as well. Uh, I immediately called Patty to see if she knew anything about it. Uh, she wasn't aware of it. Uh, I asked the, I sent an email back asking how did we get by for right at a year doing this and I. She said just didn't even think about it, you know? So I've let every, all y'all know and, uh. My personal opinion is, is I'm definitely gonna have to resign from the tack committee. I can no longer sit on that. Uh, and then we would have to reappoint. Jeff to it. Unless Jeff is willing to resign his spot and, and revoke on who gets it. Uh, and it's up to you guys. So it don't really matter to me.
Um, I am willing to resign from my spot on the MPO. And if you want both, I'm more than happy if that's the pleasure of council.
I would like to ask, I think Patty was in search of them bylaws. Did you find those bylaws? Is it all? Just like Jana said, I'm sure, I'm sure, okay.
Henderson County tack bylaws, not MPO bylaws. MPO doesn't care. But if we wanna have representation on the tack, that person also has to be on the MPO.
And we did not know that. We do going forward now. We did not know that.
Um, the, the other item, if I may, Mayor, Council, is that the, uh, uh, the alternate position. Um, uh, from, uh, from her email as well, was saying that it would be, an ideal situation would be a staff member. Who also served, I believe, on the TCC so that the alternate member would also have information in case they were going to come, uh, before that. The alternate, uh, by that email is that the alternate cannot be an elected official. And but it would be a staff member who ideally would have that seat.
And I'm still watching the MPO even.
Yes, exactly.
Anybody's out there watching, I mean, it's like watching paint dry sometimes, but there's decisions made there that affect us.
Okay, so, uh, how do we, Patty, uh, probably your man will have to help us. I'm officially resigning from the Henderson County Advisory Committee. Make sure we do this right.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mayor, just so I. Yeah, if I, if I may, Mayor, just so I understand and we understand, uh, is the idea that you all. Both may resign from your seats and then do a revote in that.
Nomination, revoke. I just think that's the cleanest way to do it. It won't look staged in any way. It's right here in a public meeting. There's no doubt about what happened.
Understood.
It's not this tea swapping with me kind of thing. I think that's a legal way we ought to do it.
We have to vote to accept your resignation.
I would think.
I'll make a motion, we accept the mayor's resignation from the Henderson County County.
I got a, I got a, I got a motion. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none.
And then I would respectfully request to be allowed to resign from the MPO representative.
Need a motion on that, please.
Some of them.
Okay, so I need a second. Okay, uh, okay, so Brian got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so at this point, normally Patty would be the clerk at the, she would be running the deal. Uh, so we need, I need somebody to do it. This person will be representing the MPO and the tack.
Yes, we have a motion to nominate someone.
You willing?
By the way, I will, and it's just gonna be for a little bit. It's just aggravating, but yes, we will.
I'd like to nominate Mayor Goss to be the representative of the MPO and the tack, Henderson County tack.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? And, uh, okay, we got that behind us.
Any opposed? Drive to ask.
That's right, exactly. It's one of the least expected, forget it. Okay.
And who would you like to nominate to be the staff person?
Uh, looking for a second.
I'll second if he's cool with that.
Any discussion, Malcheck?
Okay, we, we did have a conversation.
All, all right, no more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed here? None. Alright, uh, moving back to that standardization, so. Let me find it.
We discovered, you know, that we're keeping pulling this item, apparently that the list of items were not included in your package. It's a specific set of standardized items, and that's a part of the revolution.
Okay.
These are the ones that we know about now, right? That could change moving forward and.
Yes, ye- yes, sir. So, so essentially, and, and, and I apologize if I preempted, uh, Councilmember Good, if you wanted, you're more than welcome to just pull the.
This helps because she called me asking questions and, you know, and this is.
Yeah, we.
I was gonna say, I've got several questions.
Sure, yes, ma'am. I didn't, and I said, I apologize, I didn't mean to preempt.
That's okay. At first I was gonna say, you swam me in a bunch of verbiage, but none of it answered any of that. And I was like, you know, they're talking about the DOT and five hundred thousand dollars here and ninety thousand dollars. But there's nothing at all in there about the trash cans or the benches.
Uh, if I may, the, uh, on page three of the backup material, it's, uh, it's subsection six. Uh, it that highlighted mention of purchases of apparatus, supplies, materials, or equipment. This was, this was backup material since we referenced the general statute within the, that piece. We just wanted to make sure that that piece was highlighted, uh, for you all as well, just to make sure we tied that together. And I apologize if that was not clear.
Um, one of my questions was on the front here, it says standardization of purchases, is that from the general fund?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So why don't it come from the parks committee?
A park budget.
Well, the parks budget is a part of the general fund.
But does it not get, does these particular items such as this? Would it not pull straight from the coal budget?
Yes, so, and again.
I could see where other stuff might not, but, yeah, but tracking it, we would know it come from.
Exactly, yes.
That was a question she had for me, and I said, I would hope that it, that the particulars come from their departments.
Yes.
And anything outside of that that we had to have that we wouldn't expect and would get pulled from the general.
Yes, yes, sir. And so, and, and thank you for this opportunity to clarify. The, um, essentially what this allows is there's, there's a parks budget that's associated with these items. Uh, and so, uh, general statute allows us to standardize certain items because you don't want, you know. Trash cans of one sitting beside trash cans of another. You want to, you want to kind of have that standardization. So th- this is all part of the budget that you all have already passed. It's just allowing us to be able to say, in lieu of having to go and do. Three informal, uh, informal quotes every time, pick the lowest one, and they're all going to be mismatched. The general statute allows us to say, oh, we like this one. We've done the procurement properly. We were ready to go and we're going to keep with that model moving forward.
There's no prices on this, so how much does this stuff cost?
It changes daily. It changes daily.
Okay.
Just like I told before, to me, it's, I can't bank on it being, when I bid a job, it could be lower or higher, you know? So it'd be almost impossible to get it there. That, in the budget though, when we allot the money for the parks, we expect everything that we put in there is gonna fulfill the needs.
And I apologize, yes, sir.
You think, yeah, that they can go back to their original buyer or vendor so that they would all look the same. You wouldn't be following the new policy that says you have to go with the lowest possible bidder, and then.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
In terms of did not want to have weird.
I got you. And there gets you the standardization.
Correct.
But it's, is, does this changing the limit on how much they can spend or anything?
No, no, they can.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was just wanting to make sure. And I understand wanting to keep things unified across and, and I appreciate that. They do a great job, but. I just want to be responsible with the taxpayers' money and with the money that the town has to work with. Because of the beautiful five hundred thousand dollar plus bathroom we have sitting down here. I hope we never have another one.
Yes, ma'am, I, I understand. And, and, uh, one of the other, I, uh, one of the other elements just to bring again into this is that. If let's just say there's a new item that we're going to go purchase, um, that we don't have anything else in there currently. We are, you know, looking to buy something new for there. That still has to go through the procurement policy and the process that you all have approved. So making sure we get the lowest responsible bidder for that item, uh, et cetera. From there, though, then we say, again, that item is, we want to keep that look. Then that allows us to say, we've done the procurement once, we feel comfortable with it, and we want to keep that standardization. And so that, so there are checks and balances on the cost structure and then that allowance for standardization.
Well, that's what I was wanting was more information on this right here and, um. I had one more question and I forgot it. It's getting late.
While you're thinking about that, though, if we'd have had the standardization in place when that picnic shuttle was built, it would have helped control it looking more like that one. Theoretically, it was supposed to look thick for tack wood, but in the drafting of it, in the architectural drawings, they give some leeway. This would have tied that up a little tighter when we looked at it back then, you know? Cause we already had one.
I don't know what the question was. So is the verbiage in here the same as it was before, except for the gray area here? Is that the only thing that was changed?
Oh, there's nothing that has changed in there. Well, that, that's general.
Okay. Okay.
So this, yeah, the staff report referenced the general statute. And because the staff report doesn't go into the, all the specific thing, we wanted to try to show you where it was within the general statute for clarification. That's why it's highlighted. So there's nothing changed.
I was reading through that and I'm thinking, oh my God, it don't say anything about this, you know, but it's talk about stuff I can't even comprehend.
Well, I, I appreciate that. That's, that's very good feedback for us as well. We'll make sure going forward that we communicate that better when it comes to the packets. How they are, uh, and what the, uh, what, what reference points we're looking at, especially when it comes to the, the backup material. So thank you.
Any, uh, is that all on that? Do we need a motion to approve this, correct? Uh, any more discussion on it? Y'all good with it? Alright, I'm just saying a motion to, uh, move forward with it.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the standardization of purchased, um, general fund. And adopt resolution. Twenty twenty five thirty two.
Thank you, Senator, a second. Thank you, Brian. Any more discussion on it? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed here? None. Other business? Seem like any other business? I've got, I've got one item. Um, I'm serious about, let's send that mic to planning board. I know Mr. Malcheck said the other day, you know, that he was, had thought about it, it need to go be looked at, at least looked at on these nuisance ordinances and stuff. Let's, let's run it by, calm this crowd down, let's run it by, get it looked at, planning board comes back with it, so be it. And then we'll make a decision if we're gonna stick, whether to change it any, okay?
And I want to point out the staff notes passed with enforcing.
Sure.
So when they go do their job, they do their job, you know, you know, hilarious.
And that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking for is just make sure this is exactly what the community wants. And, and they're, and they're, and I trust you, I've talked to each and every one of them. None of them upset with any of the staff. It is just they, they just want to make sure they're getting treated equal and not being spotted. And, and I've, I've talked to both, uh, McCurran Hand and Mr. Malcheck, and I told them that I hold each and every one of these. This has been on the books for years. We're just now getting caught up to where we got some staff that can actually go and look and get after it. And it was, and we just didn't realize some of this language is in there, and if it needs to be changed, we'll change it. If not, then we'll just have a web link, but that's all I'm asking.
And we can possibly look into some ways that, you know, someone has a car that breaks down or a truck that breaks down, they can't afford a new motor or whatever. Give them a way to have it there, like if it's a permit or something like that to understand.
And we've got, and we're on there, we didn't, I didn't know about it.
That has been always good to work with people.
Exactly.
Right. Speaking of, there's a car sitting on the side of two eighty right past Cardinal Drive. It's been there for over a month, and it's tagged with a highway patrol sign where they checked it.
Understood, thank you. If, if, if I may, just, just because we want to make sure, bringing this to the planning board, is this, is that a general consensus of council, of council for us to start moving towards that direction?
I'll work at it.
Let's, let's pull. I think with them, I think the nuisance ordinance, just in general, just to make sure, there might be some stuff we actually need to add, but there might be some stuff we want to soften or give more time here or there or whatever, depending on the situation. And, uh, we didn't realize it, and I don't know, y'all might, that the businesses. Industrial, commercial, everything gets looked at exactly the same, but I did not realize that.
Yeah, I think.
Except for agriculture, except for agriculture.
And, and in fact, it explicitly says that, uh, that it, that it's the same, uh, at the same time. So yes, and. Uh, but I just want to make sure, I'm looking at, uh, Mr. Malachek here as well, the, uh, uh, would it, would it be the will of council for us to be able? We're gonna debrief, obviously, in the morning, talk through a potential plan and strategy and get that going. And what that could look like for bringing it forward and then be able to discuss that with you. We have an October second meeting, obviously, next week. We can give you an update at that time.
If you'll just, if we can just get, get an update, just to know that there is gonna be some, a look at, that's all we're asking for.
Think, think about businesses and what the business is, it, business is, for instance, if you run a car repair shop, people are gonna drop their cars off. In various stages of registration and condition and without wheels and motors and all that stuff, and you can't get to it right away. So, you know, a little, little.
And sometimes the people just don't have the money to get it fixed right then, but they can't. They figure it's better off in their yard because they're afraid if they leave it in, I'm hearing if they leave it at their house, then it is gonna be a problem. But if they take it to the mechanic shop and he ain't charge them rent to sit there, he knows he's gonna get the business, but they feel like it's not gonna get one of these letters sent to them if it's there.
Sometimes they take it there and they can't afford to get it fixed, so they just leave it.
Sometimes they take it there and you can't get parts in. That's been a big thing over the last couple of years. But also, um, the tag office forgives. If you, if you're behind on an inspection and you take a note from a mechanic and say, or a tag rental, you know, my car was in the shop, they will change your.
Registration date.
Registration date.
So with all that being said, we try, because we've been told to not guide them too awful much. We just wanted to take a good look at it, make sure that they think at it from a common sense standpoint, because this, that thing is really old. So there might be some stuff in it that needs updating, but there's some stuff probably needs to be looked at. That's all we're asking for.
Understood. Well, well, we'll come back next week. Uh, it'll either be, uh, more than likely, it may either be a business meeting item. But more than likely, it'll be, may, maybe a manager update, just to let you know where we're at.
And we understand, yeah, we understand. They got stuff to do too.
Also, if, if any of them are coming up with fines or stuff, reach out to them and say, hey, you know. We're working on this and see what we can do and find an answer before it comes to the end of the year and they're getting their refund cha- check.
So, and, and if I may, just, again, I, I won't speak on specifics, but I'll just say, generally speaking, one of the things that, and we, we've been talking about this. And it's continued to be since I've been here, um, that the, uh, and before my time, nothing has changed since I've been in this seat. However, we, we focused on the, the goal of being community focused. That goal of working with our residents and our businesses to try and do everything that we can to try to bring them into compliance and also meet them where we can. Those conversations happen, and I want to thank the, our, our planning and zoning staff. Because one of the things that makes Mills River unique is the touch that we provide. It's, uh, it's even, uh, you know, we, you know, without fear of favoritism, you know, or anything else. The goal is to be fair, even across the board, and be community focused to make sure that we're talking with them. That, uh, as much as we can to aid, provide information that we can, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record as well, that that's something that we still, uh, that is one of our core values, is to make sure that community is there. And that people feel that community when we're talking with them.
And, and hearing that, just, just so you know, as you see, they brought another nuisance ordinance with them tonight. Because small community, they all know everybody. Well, they knew that said guy had got extra time to clean his place up. The other one felt like he was getting pressured, even though I told him he wouldn't get in pressure, but he got the other letter. That he, the next letter was facing, I think, the fifty dollar fine a day. So they felt like they was getting pressured to hurry this up.
So, and again, I'm so sorry, Mayor.
That's just, that's, that's one of the things, even though you just said that, it just brought to my attention that I know that's the way we are, and that's the way I want us to be. But this particular person did, wouldn't fill in that. I don't know if it didn't get told or if he didn't hear it correctly or didn't understand. But when he got that last letter, that, uh, if I understand him right, he got, he had thirty days to comply totally, or he was facing a fifty dollar fine. Now, that may not be the truth, but that's the way I understood it to be.
Well, and again, speaking, speaking generally, because I, I, I dare not want to speak on, on a specific matter from, from my seat. But the, generally speaking, we, and when I say generally speaking, we follow the guidelines and the guidance that is within, uh, the purview for each, uh, for those individuals.
Okay.
Um, now, the, again, from a community perspective, being able to work with people where we can, um, that is, again, that continues to be the goal. But there are, uh, but letters, those timelines, et cetera, they, they are set in place, they are, they, and they are followed. And again, they are followed fairly and equally when that, and I just want to make sure, again, from, uh, Mr. Malachek is shaking his head as well. Because, because the one thing, and I'll just say this again for everyone who's still awake. Code enforcement is an incredibly hard and difficult thing to do. It is hard, and no, no resident or, or, or business wants to. you know, see a letter or have somebody show up at their door, and it's also very difficult for code enforcement, uh, individuals as well. The only way that we can ensure that we're doing our job ethically is to ensure that we're following the rules and procedures across the board. But we're gonna do it in a way, uh, and again, we've had conversations, we're gonna continue to do this way, with it being community focused first, compassionate for our residents and our businesses, to be able to work with them where we can, while making sure we keep up with the ethical obligation that's required in order to do code enforcement.
Okay. That's all we ask.
Yes, sir.
Would it be feasible to go away from the anonymous complaints and let people?
Well, I, I must agree that it's, that's, you know, you gotta be careful with that, because you understand what I'm making say. If you put, if their name gets put out there, and you take said person by retaliation, and I don't want that to happen either, because then I gotta deal with that as well.
But that might encourage people to go to each other and start a conversation.
That's not, there's people that, um, I love everyone, but not everybody I can like. And.
But you wanna sit here and scare me?
Not, not, not really. I mean, it don't, it don't, it don't, no, it don't happen.
It goes to a certain amount before.
It don't happen like that, you know that. I mean, like, you, if I come to your house and said, hey, man, you know, I would tell it different. I say, hey, bud, you know, this, this, well, but this trash is, this, you know, or this trash has been here in the ditch, can I pick it up for you?
Can I help you?
And that's not necessarily what's involved in these particular.
No, no, no.
Issues, you know, but I, I think that we, we, as little as we like it, we do have to have the anonymous complaint process.
I, I agree.
Just to protect.
I mean, I've been punished that way too, but I agree. It's not gonna, yeah. I would like for them to communicate and be good neighbors.
If somebody complained on me, I would take it very personally. I'm like, what did I do? You know, how did I upset this person? But then again, if I knew of a situation.
See, I have to deal with it all the time because of tracking bug and stuff on the road, the neighbors come and they, I, I deal with it. So I, you know, I, I just know how to talk to them, I guess. And I, hey, I'll try to pay the fire department to come wash it down or whatever, and they laugh, you know, but.
There are rules in the statutes that govern the debt settlement. We have to give them sixty day notice and a thirty day notice before we can do anything to protect them. So they have, and it's ninety days to resolve that before it goes.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I know it's something new that we started, and Shannon said he didn't real, even realize we had started something like that. Well, I hope they, I hope none of them ever have to go there, but. Right. Well, I understand property taxes have to be paid, and, um, fines, the revenue off that goes to the schools. So, you know, i- if we can, in this instance where there's still conversations going on, you know, keep that to a holding place until we get this settled, you know, and then in the future, when it applies, it applies.
Uh, as long as they're working, these guys are not gonna write anybody up for something that ain't in that book. And I, I know that, and I trust in that. So, and I don't ever doubt that, guys. I never doubt that. I know y'all doing your job, and you're more easygoing than you have to be, and you're more willing to work with people than you have to be. I do know that. But, uh, just, the thing is, is just, if we get in a situation like it, just out of respect for us, let us know that they're getting ready to get in a bad way, you know, and get in a fine situation. So maybe we, me personally, I'll go tell them myself along, and if I have to, I'll take the letter.
Look, any of us can handle.
Yeah, that just helps a little. I mean.
So, uh, one other item that we haven't talked about regarding this, but, you know, as good as our staff is, and again, I think that they're the, the best, uh, when it comes to this, the, we all make mistakes. And so the other thing that is, uh, allowed for anyone, uh, is to go through that appeals process. That appeals process is, you know, essentially saying that, hey, that person does not agree with, uh, the assessment, and they can bring it to the Board of Adjustment for consideration. The fee, uh, the, the fee cost is, uh, is set by council as a part of the, the fee discussion that we have annually as well. Um, and so, uh, I just wanna, again, for the record, you know, there are also opportunities to say, hey, you know, what, maybe we did do something wrong, maybe, maybe there is, you know, uh, something that needs to be looked at, and there is an appeals process, a formalized process for that.
Last thing, um, I make it a point to watch boards and committees, and I would ask that, you know, uh, in, individuals serving on committees may not necessarily respect people holding chairs, but respect the chair. Respect the fact that we, as council members, were voted here, and we're doing our best. And, um, just, uh, in these meetings, please be as professional as you can and, um, follow proper decorum, and, you know, if you think coming to a meeting is a waste, talking to us is a waste of time, let's don't share that in public. Let's, let's try to keep on the same team in public. And that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll say it again next meeting, because it doesn't take much guts here when everybody else is asleep to say something. I can say it next meeting too.
Understood. All right, anything else on this at all?
I vote, or I make a motion, whatever motion we have to make to go home.
Well, we got business, Craig.
I make a motion, we table that.
It'll be a very brief one, Dave.
It will. Okay, second. All right, any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Back in the business meeting? Need a motion for that?
And I'll second it as long as Mr. McCurehan says every other word. Get this out of here in half the time.
Right now, sorry. Have one meeting scheduled in November, and it's November thirteenth. I'm away at a conference with one meeting in November and one meeting in December. Um, we just wanted council to be thinking if they wanted to break November up into two meetings instead of the one.
Or, or potentially, or potentially move that meeting up a week or back a week. So it just, there's flexibility there, or we can keep it on the thirteenth as, as it relate to the opportunity.
Figure it take a minute, so, for November.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I personally, at least for now, have another meeting on the first Thursday night, and I've missed the last, or will have missed the last two, so. But I can be here if that's what we need.
I mean, what is our, what does our load look like on, what we got coming up? Any, how many stack?
Uh, I, I like to think that we don't have that much coming forward, but, uh, I've been wrong before.
Okay, so when saying that, was just. Well, we just, you know, we just, we just have to figure out when, yeah, but yeah, we can, we can do that.
We might save you a five hour night.
So we're sticking with the first thing. And I think I told you the other day that I will be gone for the next meeting, the last meeting in October, but I think, if mother correctness said I will be here. So I don't think I'll leave until the twenty-fourth, because I think our meeting is October twenty-third.
Perfect. I will make sure that, uh, we put out your nameplate and keep your seat warm.
That's fine. Okay.
When is the volunteer appreciation dinner?
That's the one I will miss, because it's like the twenty-eighth.
I'll eat your barbecue.
October twenty-eight. Yes, ma'am.
Where you gonna put them?
Sweet sauce.
Okay, say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.